I'll turn my microphone on so you can hear what I'm saying. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held on Wednesday, the 25th of April, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the municipal complex. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Trenton Times, The Trentonian, and The Compass Cable of New Jersey Incorporated. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton. Could you read the roll call for us, please Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes, here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich? Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Ockman?
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenemont? Mr. Valvanes?
Here.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have a couple of housekeeping things to do. There is a revised draft of the 53 Hullfish Street case, which has got the file number You have a copy of the revised draft with a pile of papers when you came in. If there are any other additions or corrections that are needed, would you make those known at this point? If not, I'd like a motion to accept as modified and a second to that motion.
I move to accept.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second to the motion. Could you call the roll for us Claudia?
One second.
Oh, no. You have to do it, don't you?
I'm prompt.
Because only some of us can say yes.
Right. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes. Okay. And then the next case we have to memorialize is 159 Linden Lane, which carries the file This one has not been changed since we received it. If there are any comments or changes, we should make them now. If not, a motion to approve and a second to that motion will do the trick.
I move to approve.
You have a motion to approve, a second to the motion?
Second.
You have a second to the motion. So could you call the roll, please, then?
I will. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes. Okay. So now we pass to new cases. And the first application we will hear this evening is 1036 Great Road. And that's the Ten Acre Foundation. And it carries the case number Z1313-116. What I will do is I will ask Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum to the board into the record, and then I'll invite you to make your case. Mr. Bridger.
Mr. Bridger, before you begin, I'll just note the noticing is in order. Board has jurisdiction and will swear you in for the evening. You swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. 2014, this board granted Ten Acre Foundation use variance relief for 1036 Great Road to convert a single-family to a two-family use for use by their employees. It carried a condition that a deed restriction be placed on the property that the property would revert back to a single-family home. That was done back in 2015, deed restrictions in place. They have not started construction. The variance has lapped and they are requesting an extension. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Do we have any questions, Mr. Bridger? Okay, so if you would care to start.
Good evening. Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee on behalf of the applicant here tonight, the Ten Acre Foundation. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as Mr. Bridger said, were here to seek an extension so that the foundation could actually start work on the project that was approved in 2014. We have tonight just one very quick witness to the extent you have questions about the circumstances around it, so you can make the showing of the good cause here, which involves amongst other things the need to have waited for the tenant or the residents of the home to be relocated before they could convert it to the two-family use that they have planned and was approved for campus. So if we could swear in to my left, your right, Bill Bunting, he's a senior project director at the foundation, who will give a little bit of the background here tonight.
Mr. Bunting, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. So if you could just very quickly take the board through what the foundation has done to get ready to pull the permits, so to speak, and the efforts we've made towards finishing this project.
Sir, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Bill Bunting, as you heard, senior project manager at Ten Acre Foundation. We have been working with an architect to refine the drawings that were prepared years ago when the variance was granted. And we have secured a contractor to give us a bid and look at the project. And permit applications have been put in. Unfortunately, it was not on our radar that the variance has lapsed. So that's why we're here.
Thanks, Bill. And, you know, just as to some of the other circumstances, I believe there's been a few changes in upper-level leadership and management with the real estate team. Is that correct?
That is correct.
As well as the attorney that initially did this has now retired and gone into a private role in life.
So I can add a few things to that. At the time the variance was granted, it was a priority for Ten Acre's leadership to convert this property from a single-family home to a two-family home for staff. And then two things happened right after that. The leadership changed, and we needed the property for staff to live in. So for this time that has passed, we've been waiting for another property to be available for the staff to move into. That's happened, so now we're ready.
And if I remember, the changes are only internal to the house. Everything else that one can see is unchanged. It's just making it into a two-family residence.
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Any questions? Okay, this seems just like extending something we did previously.
Yeah, I think it's, I was just curious why it was a short-term variance before.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry, I couldn't.
I was just curious why the variance, you know, had a deadline on it previously.
That's just in the township ordinance, there's a one-year for variances that require a building permit. You've got a year to pull the permit. To the extent, part of this was just a use variance, didn't really need a permit, but to the extent that a permit needed to be pulled, once a year goes by, we need to come back and ask for an extension.
Got you.
I move we accept this extension. We have a motion to accept. Is there a second to the motion? I'll second. You have a second to the motion?
Would you open it to the comment?
Oh, all right. I haven't done, but we have a motion which we will hold until I ask that question. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this case? Seeing no one, our motion is still there.
Chairman Royce, one last thing, to the extent the board would consider it, since they are ready to go, if the motion could include, they may be interested in proceeding at risk of an appeal of this extension. And at times, I know the planning board has included in their motion that the construction office would allow the permits to be pulled, notwithstanding that the period hasn't ended. Certainly, that would be their risk, but if something like that is permitted, I'd ask that you consider including that as well.
Mr. Kennedy, I'm not sure that it needs to be in the resolution. I think the building department will let you pull a permit, but they'll make it clear to you, it's at your risk that you're doing it. So...
Thank you.
I don't think you need to include it.
We don't put that in the motion. It's just some risk they can take on their own without the help of the board. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Could you call the roll for us, please Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Don't take that risk. Good. So the next case is the Tarhune Road and Harrison Street and Sunrise Development, Inc. And it carries the case number Z1717-514. I'll do the same with you as I did with the previous people. I'll get Mr. Bridger to enter his memo into the record, and then I'll ask you to make your case. Mr. Bridger.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We'll just note the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction.
Everything's okay and we can do it? Good.
Thanks. I would just like to note that typically on the site plan, we have our planner, Lee Solo, read the memo, his planner's memo into the record. And Lee is retiring. He's not at this meeting. We're lucky to have Joanne Slagle from Banish Associates as our planner tonight, so she is going to actually read her report into the record. And Jack West, the land use engineer, and I would be glad to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay. So if you would do that. Speak into the microphone so A, I can hear you, and B, you can be recorded.
Good evening.
Ms. Slagle, will it swear you in?
Yes.
Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you again. My name is Joannis Slagle from Banish Associates.
I think you'll be in the microphone fairly close.
It's not...
You cannot, cannot.
You have to hold it very close.
Yeah.
Is this good?
That's better.
All right. Good evening. I prepared a memo in preparation for this evening's hearing. It's dated April 16, 2018. The nature of the application is the property is currently an undeveloped site located on the corners of North Harrison Street and Tarhune Road. The property is located in the RSM district, that's residential senior market zoning. The property is 4.5 acres and it's located in a section where to the south of the property is the Princeton Shopping Center. To the north of the property are office uses, and to the east and west are standard single-family residential uses. The applicant is proposing to construct an 82,573-square-foot assisted-living senior facility with associated improvements. The facility is proposed to be three stories, have 89 units, and 53 parking spaces. Most of the proposed improvements will be located near the intersection with the parking and other associated improvements to the east of the proposed building. The applicant is currently seeking a bifurcated application, seeking the de-use and non-use variances at this time, and will, and if successful, will come in for site plan and any associated bulk variances. The RSM zoning district is an affordable housing zoning district requiring a 15% unit set aside for rental units and a 20% set aside for for-sale units. However, they're proposing an assisted living facility and are offering a 10% unit for Medicaid available beds. So the requested variances that they're seeking are, there's four D variances. There's a D1 variance, and that's to permit an assisted living facility, which is not permitted by right in the zone. A D4 variance to exceed the permitted FAR or floor area ratio, where 25% is permitted, and they're seeking 42%. D5 to exceed the permitted gross density, where 11 units per acre is currently permitted, and they are seeking 19.73 units per acre. And finally, a D6 variance, which is seeking to exceed the maximum permitted height, where 35 is currently permitted, and they are seeking 49.9 feet. As indicated, they are bifurcating this, however, the proposed site plan that they have provided does seek some bulk variances. The first one is to encroach into the front yard setback, where 20 feet is permitted from Tarhune and 50 from North Harrison, and they are seeking 39.7 feet from North Harrison. Also, they are seeking a rear yard setback, where 20 feet is permitted, and they are seeking 18.8 feet. Finally, they seek three additional bulk variances for height, maximum height to setback is 1 1/2 to 1, and they are seeking a .86 to 1, excuse me, a .86 to 1 on Harrison Street and a .508 to 1 on Tarhune. For signage, there's currently permitted a maximum of one ground sign up to 10 square feet and 7 feet high with a 15-foot setback. They are seeking a 16-square-foot sign, 5-foot setback. And finally, parking, off-street parking standards require 110 parking stalls for the proposed use, and they are seeking only 53 stalls. I can go into the use, D-variance discussion, if the zoning board likes, or if you would like to hear testimony first from the applicant. I'm not sure how you typically run. For the use variance discussion, they are seeking D-variances. D-variances require that testimony be provided by the applicant to prove the positive and negative criteria. The negative criteria basically means that the proposed use and its development will not negatively impact the intent of the master plan and the zone and the public good. The positive criteria usually refers to any refusal of the project would impose an undue hardship and that the proposed project will carry out many of the purposes for planning in the municipal land use law. Let me get this right here. Is that better? First, I'll go through the, what they call the true D-variance. It's a D1 variance. Again, they will have to prove the negative and positive criteria. The D1 refers to requesting a use that is not currently permitted in the zone. Here, the applicant should demonstrate that the proposed use can be reconciled with the zoning ordinance and the master plan, and that any impacts on the adjoining properties can be mitigated. This can usually be done through landscaping, buffering, finding circulation remedies, issues of light pollution that are typically associated with the use. Again, the RSM district contemplates higher-density residential senior market uses and would act as a transitional area between the current uses. However, the applicant must demonstrate that the proposed use will fit into the current character of the area and not impact the zone plan. There are several what we call non-use D-variances. The applicant should provide testimony regarding these non-use D-variances, much in the way that they do for the use variances. In other words, proving the positive and the negative criteria. Again, the non-D-use variances are the floor area ratio, and here we're looking at the intensity of the development, and those are the things that we're considering. The density variance, again, the increase of the permitted density. A height variance, and does the height of this proposed structure offend the purposes of the current permitted height? So when looking at the non-use variances, the board would want to reconcile what the proposed development will be like and how it will fit into the current character of the area. And if there are any negative impacts, are they able to adequately mitigate those impacts? As indicated, while this is a bifurcated use variance, they are seeking the bulk variances. That would be for the front yard setback and the rear yard setback and height. And again, much like the D-variances, you are looking to see how the requested bulk variances will impact the adjoining community, the zone plan, and the master plan. The signs and the parking as proposed, they should provide testimony why the signs cannot be compliant with the current zoning regulations and why the parking identified is not able to comply with the ordinance and the reasoning for the reduction in the parking stalls. So that is a quick overview of my memo. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask me.
I do have a question. The RSM zone is a senior zone?
Yes. It's a residential senior market zone. It's part of the affordable housing zoning in the municipality, and it was intended to provide a higher-density residential area with set-asides of 10% to 15%, depending on the type of development that was going to be there.
10% to 15% is the affordable component?
10% to 15% is the affordable component.
But the overall development has a minimum age requirement on it of 55? Is it 55, 60?
Yes. Senior housing would have an age-restricted requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question also. But first, you said 10% to 15%. Isn't it 15 to 20?
The current zoning requires a 15% set aside for rental units and a 20% set aside for for-sale units.
Yes.
Since they are proposing a assisted living facility, that is usually calculated per bed, and those beds are restricted to Medicare patients, Medicaid patients, excuse me, and that set aside is generally 10%.
And I'll get into that now. That's a Department of Health regulation. I've yet to see a citation that says the 10% Medicaid set aside, which relates to assisted living and Department of Health, is immune to the, basically, the UHAC.
Yes.
I've looked, and I know what the health citation says, and it doesn't say it's immune to that, unless one of you two can point it out. And I do have a copy here.
For the record, Mark. Can everyone hear me okay? For the record, Mark Poli Castro, attorney for the applicant. Thank you for having us. We will address that point head-on. There is, as you point out correctly, a statute that governs the 10% requirement as to beds, so that is the requirement as to assisted living. And we'll address that with several witnesses this evening.
But I think your point was to the UHAC regulations, and you're right, they do not, right, they do not apply.
Yes, and my point is especially to our attorney and to our planner. Have you seen a citation that says it's immune to any other requirement?
I have not seen one in the UHAC regulations. I think that ordinarily, the Title 26 of the New Jersey statutes is accepted by municipalities as the state requirement or the state, shall we say, I won't say exemption, but that where you have this 10% set aside for Medicaid beds, that is going to comply with any affordable set aside that's in the municipal ordinance. But I agree with you, I have looked through UHAC. I did not see it, but that, now, that doesn't necessarily mean that UHAC is, I'm trying to be exhaustive in their regulations, so...
And I don't see it in the UHAC, but I don't see it in Section 26 that covers health. It says 10%, but it doesn't say there's no, that it excludes any other requirement, municipal requirement.
I've got, I can show you. I mean, I actually have it. I mean, I...
Okay, let's see if we're looking at the same thing.
All right.
It's here. It's this, here. It's written here, it's printed, it's not the same. We, we...
So you two now agree on...
We agree that it doesn't say what they're saying it says.
Okay.
It doesn't say that.
Mr. Paul Castro, I guess that's something that you're going to address when you present.
Yeah, it's our position that this preempts the local law, and it does not say those words in this.
I'm sorry.
It does not say preemption in this statute, as you're correct, it does not say that.
So I'm correct in saying that.
Well, it does not say that, but our position is clearly that the 10% governs and is universally accepted across the state as the maximum requirement.
Okay. Fine. So do we have any other questions before I... No? Why don't you start your case?
Thank you. Thank you for having us, Mr. Chairman. We like to get right to it. We have several witnesses. I don't know how much time we actually have this evening, but we do have several witnesses with us from out of state. I'd like to introduce our first witness from Sunrise and get right to it, if that's okay. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Jerry Liang, spelled L-I-A is an apple, N-G.
Sir, will swear you in? If you'd raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Now, what is your role at Sunrise, just briefly?
Sure. I'm the senior vice president of developments and investments at Sunrise. I've worked with the company for over 10 years now, and currently in my role, I work on new Sunrise developments throughout the country. And in particular, New Jersey is one of my territories that I cover.
You're based, the company's based out of...
That's right. So Sunrise Senior Living is based out of Northern Virginia. We are proudly celebrating our 36th anniversary as a company. We were founded by Paul and Terry Clausen all those years ago as a company who champions the quality and the dignity of life for all seniors. I have a number of matters I'd like to cover tonight, just starting off with a little bit of background on the company and a little bit of background on myself. And in order to facilitate that, I also have a video that we've prepared that I believe on a technical side is ready to be shown.
Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
That sounds fine. We should be able to see it on our monitors, and it should appear on the screen.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul Castro, you want to make this an exhibit?
That'd be great.
Exhibit A1?
A1, thank you.
Our aging adults.
This is trying to tell us what old people look like?
That's a little background of our company.
Years ago, this couple, Paul and Terry Clausen, recognized a need. Our aging adults, our friends, parents, and grandparents needed a place to live and age with dignity, comfort, and grace. They envisioned something different from a typical nursing home. What they imagined was a community with beautiful architecture that fit into the surrounding know and care for one another as if they are family. This vision became Sunrise Senior Living, a company built upon the mission to champion quality of life for all seniors. Inside every Sunrise community, you will find a team of experienced caregivers who deliver individualized care based specifically on each resident's care needs and lifestyle preferences. We provide best-in-class assisted living for older adults who need some support with daily activities such as bathing, dressing, or medication reminders, yet value their independence and freedom to choose how they spend their days. Our Reminiscence neighborhoods are designed specifically for seniors with Alzheimer's, dementia, or other forms of memory loss. Our memory care team delivers exceptional care in a safe and secure, yet stimulating environment. At Sunrise, we provide all the comforts of home, including delicious, home-cooked meals and the opportunity to participate in a variety of activities designed to keep the body healthy and the mind sharp. And while all Sunrise communities are residential in nature, we take great care to ensure that our buildings integrate into the existing aesthetic of the local neighborhood in which they serve. Prior to building each new Sunrise community, we complete a thorough and architectural study of the surrounding area, taking into account the urban or suburban nature of the location, the height of the surrounding buildings, and the look and feel of the adjacent homes. We carefully consider each feature of the building, from the exterior colors and lighting, the style of the windows, and the residential character of the roofline, to the placement of parking and outdoor spaces. Whether you're arriving at a Sunrise or passing by a community as you travel through your neighborhood, it is designed to feel warm and inviting with elegant landscaping, open porches, and an entryway that welcomes you home. Today, Sunrise continues to grow and serve thousands of residents every day, with more than 300 communities across the United States, Canada, and the United Kingdom. At Sunrise, we pride ourselves on the people whose lives we enrich, the family members we help, and the excellent service we provide.
So now the commercial's over. Can we start on the zoning?
Yes. Well, thank you for humoring me there. The video is, is this all right? So if you may, I'm just going to stand up because we have a number of boards that I'll eventually, I'll refer to, and I would enjoy being able to address both the board as well as, as well as the public. So just providing you some additional context on the history of Sunrise, as the video had previously highlighted, we are a company with 322 properties across the United States, Canada, and the UK. And as I mentioned before, we were founded 36 years ago in Northern Virginia by Paul and Terry Clausen. And so as a company, we've been at the forefront of championing the quality of life for all seniors for, for decades now. And our particular specialty when we discuss senior living is really in the high-quality, high-acuity portion of both assisted living as well as dementia care. And so when we talk about senior housing, that term sometimes has a really wide set of definitions, and people aren't terribly clear what they mean. What we mean when we say assisted living and dementia care is that we care for people who have activities of daily living. They have needs where they could remain at home and receive similar type care by their own family members, but frequently it's just very, very difficult. So examples of these activities, we call them ADLs, would be things such as assistance with bathing, assistance with dressing, assistance with Medicaid, taking of medications, assistance with toileting, and as well as dementia care, which is a much more specialized service and within the context of our specifically designed building and secured building as well as the, our highly trained staff. It, it's just a, a much improved experience. It's very difficult to do at home. To that extent, the residents who generally move into a Sunrise are not, they're not the baby boomer seniors yet. They're, they're older than what you would imagine. So the average age at a Sunrise is not 65, it's not 75, right? Rather, it's 85. That's right, that's right. And Paul used to, used to joke that no resident at Sunrise ever self-admitted. Most people come because there was some incident, some change of life circumstance had occurred. Sometimes it's a fall, and they're exiting the hospital recovering from a broken hip. Other times, it's family members returning for Thanksgiving and seeing that mom isn't quite so able to care for herself at home as she had been, she had used to. And so the vision for a Sunrise community is one in which it is a home. And as a company, Sunrise is very careful about language to reflect the fact that this is not a facility, but this is somebody's home, and these are not patients, but rather there are residents. Sunrise provides is really the highest quality of care and services. And within the industry, we've frequently spoken about that, but up until recently have had a hard time ultimately proving that. And so I'm delighted to share with you a piece of news from the last month or two where J.D. Power had just concluded their inaugural survey within Senior Living. And he's got the little pin on. And having surveyed thousands of residents and thousands of people who, who've shopped for senior living across the country, Sunrise finished ranked number one in five out of six categories as well as overall in care and quality and services. And so we're very proud of that, and we, we're very proud of the recognition of all the hard work of our employees across, across US, Canada, and UK. Specifically here in New Jersey, Sunrise has operated for over 20 years. Today, we have 23 other existing Sunrise's throughout New Jersey, and we have a number of other projects that are in various stages of construction today. And part of my job is to look for new opportunities for Sunrise to continue to grow and be able to serve more families. I'm originally from New Jersey, I grew up in North Jersey, and so very familiar with many of these areas. And Princeton is a particular location where we've recognized a significant need for this particular use. Just a couple of notes. So when we consider locations and we consider areas, really what we're looking for are two factors within our, as we consider pent-up demand and pent-up need. We're on one hand looking for seniors, looking for our residents, future residents, and then also simultaneously, we're looking for caregivers. So these would be the children of our residents. And so both of these factors are rather high here in Princeton itself. They're, based on our demographic analysis, we've, we've found that within about a three-and-a-half mile radius around the location of this project, there are over 850 income-qualified senior households. And there are over 4,000 income-qualified caregiver households, caregivers we measure as between about 45 to 65 years old. And then within the boundaries of Princeton itself, there currently exists only one other provider of assisted living, and that's Acorn Glen, and there's only 100 units there. And so when we consider all these facts and when we think about the particular area here, we were attracted to this particular site that is located, as had been previously described, on the corner of Harrison-Tarhune.
Mr. Paul Castro, do you want to mark these as we go along then?
As A2?
Yep.
Mr. Liang, maybe you can just read the caption on that?
Sure.
Mark it as A2 and today's date.
So the board says Sunrise of Princeton contextual aerial dated April 25, 2018.
Thank you.
Okay. And for the public who may not be able to see, I'll try and tilt this after some explanation. So what you're seeing here is a zoomed-out Google satellite view of the broader area. And you see the Princeton Shopping Center, you see Harrison Street running north-south, and this is flipped around with north going downwards. And you see Tarhune, and then you see the highlight in yellow, the particular site in question. Excuse me. And the site itself, as had been mentioned, is about four and a half acres. And I would say that suggests that the site itself represents a lot of what Sunrise traditionally looks for in its, in its search for a, a location for future Sunrise's, which is that it's located in a relatively high-traffic area where there is generally strong visibility and sits at the intersection of where the, the land uses begin transitioning between residential and commercial uses. Because fundamentally, our product itself, our own project, sits at that intersection of both residential and commercial. On one hand, we certainly are a, a commercial service, we have employees, we operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We take care of people who have difficulty being taken care of, taking care of themselves at home. But on the other hand, the philosophy at Sunrise is that the home itself is the home for the residents, and for many cases, it may be their final home. Certainly, the average length of stay is reflective of that. Our residents generally stay at a Sunrise on average about 18 to 24 months, and sometimes that even decreases. And so when we looked at the location, there were many things that attracted us to, given its proximity to very popular shopping center, to McCaffrey's, given its accessibility to public transportation, with the bus stops being right there along Harrison, and with the fact that it begins to hold a transitional residential appeal and becomes easily accessible for kind of residents throughout broader Princeton itself. Moving to the next board, and... So I guess we'll label this A3.
Correct. Just read that caption as well and the date, please.
Absolutely. So A3 is labeled Sunrise of Princeton color site plan rendering. And so Board A3 zooms more into the site itself and shows the proposed project's layout within the site. We have our engineer here with us today who will provide further testimony on some of the choices that were made, and we have an architect here as well who will be able to speak to some of the more specific design elements that make it unique. But needless to say, I'll begin to cover some of the early stages of it. So given the location of the site being on the corner of pretty heavily trafficked Harrison Street as well as Tarhune Road, which also has a fair amount of traffic, the, the critical element was in order, was to try to manage both the building itself as well as the access points to best fit the site and, and really produce something that would ultimately be, 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 be something that the town and all of the residents would be equally happy with. We've spent a lot of time on the design and the project itself. This certainly is a very iterative process. During the early diligencing stages, we've spent numerous, numerous hours working on alternate sketches, alternate designs. We've had various outreach meetings with the general surrounding neighborhood, and we've worked to try and figure out how best to fit and piece things together. As it currently layout, lays out, there are two access points off of Tarhune Road, with one of them being aligned to the access point from the medical office facility that's across the street from Tarhune. And what we've done is we've shifted the parking over further to the eastern side, and we've brought the building to provide kind of frontage and, and street presence to the Tarhune and then also the Harrison Street side. We've been, had different other designs that we've considered in the past, but we were within the context of a number of discussions with neighbors and with staff and, and others. You know, I think one of the characteristic designs that were, that, that was being looked for here was one that helps improve the overall streetscape and really redevelop a, a raw piece of land that has had, that has been otherwise kind of underutilized. And so the, there are different ways to consider how to do the building, and certainly that we're not, and certainly we're not ultimately committed to, we're not finalized in saying this absolutely has to be the case. However, we normally think of it very much like a Rubik's Cube, where you just keep turning, keep turning, keep turning, and we felt like this was a plan that helped satisfy a number of different desires. So the building is relatively compact, and there's a reason for that, which is that given the advanced age of our frailty of our residents, shorter hallways and accessibility to common space is pretty important. Additionally, common space is a really heavy component of the Sunrise's as well. And so I'm going to pull up another board. Let's see, A4.
A4, please.
I don't know if it's going to shoot down here. There's not much of a caption, says Sunrise Senior Living of Princeton by J.S.A. the Architects. So this image board represents some images of interiors of other recent Sunrise's that have been built throughout the country. Just highlighted here are areas such as living rooms and bistro areas and dining rooms of various sorts, robust entryways, the grand staircase that is a signature hallmark of Sunrise buildings. And the images here are just to help illustrate the fact that Sunrise is committed to the highest quality of both design and comfort, and the fact that the vast, a significant portion of the building is dedicated to common space because the philosophy at Sunrise is that we want our residents to spend time with one another outside of their rooms. So rather than just put large apartment spaces, generally speaking, Sunrise is about 50% common space for the building itself. This is in particularly important for our dementia care floor, we call it Reminiscence. And on this particular building, it's located on the third floor because the third, the, the Reminiscence area is secured. So it's protective of both the residents there as well as certainly of neighbors as well. And as such, all day-to-day activities and daily living occurs on that floor. So all dining, all activities, as well as the units are all there together at the, within that floor. And so thus, we dedicate a great deal of both common space and then as well outdoor space to our residents. I'm going to put up another one called A5. A5 is labeled similarly as A4, but represents images showing exteriors of Sunrise's and many of the outdoor spaces. Landscaping, flowers, and gardens, and walking spaces are really critical to the overall experience of being at a Sunrise. And here, I'm pointing to, one of the particular images shows an outdoor patio space. So that would be an example of a dedicated outdoor space for residents who live in Reminiscence. And so that's why when, as we show the designs of the building, as we talk about kind of the site plan, you know, part of what's necessary here is, it's not just so much unit density, it's the fact that in order to properly and best care for our residents, we provide as much both common as well as outdoor space as possible. I'm going to flip back to the site plan on A3. So you can see here that the entryway drives into a porch of shares. So you can see here that the entryway drives into a porch share, which goes through to the front door. This has a covered drop-off area, protected from rain and snow.
The front door is facing east on that diagram.
Correct, the front door is facing east. That's right. Protected from the elements, and then visitors will then be able to move over into the parking spaces. As you enter into the building, there's gonna be a significant amount of common space right here towards the front entrance of the building. This will include things like the bistro area, libraries, dining rooms, and the like. One of the reasons for the shape of the building is that it really helps provide a very expansive, but also protected, outdoor living space for assisted living. And so as you can see there, there's quite a bit of patio space and walking areas and gardening spaces for the residents, many of whom still enjoy to do that at their age. Most of the remainder of the building, then, is dedicated to units. They're very quiet uses. Our residents, as you can imagine, generally go to sleep at a relatively early hour, and the functional activity of the building is primarily oriented around the center of the site or in the center of the area that is shielded by the building itself from the surrounding areas. And similarly, as you can see, the way we've set up loading and trash is such that it would be fully screened by the building itself, as well as by other enclosures.
Where is the end of your property? You've chosen very bad things to look at because black-on-black is hard to see.
Sorry.
What is the boundary of your property on that diagram?
I'm gonna trace it with my finger. So the property runs, as you can see, up along here in Harrison and begins to cut westward right around here.
So you're right up against the property line on the south?
Correct, on the south side. And then the property begins to jog southward and has a very long line this way.
It goes around the other side of the parking lot.
Correct, that's right. And so, yeah, the challenge of this particular site is the fact that it is relatively thin, as you consider the north-south. And so in terms of, as we consider how best to orient things, we recognize that due to both grade change, as well as use over here at the shopping center, if we were to push a little bit further south in that general direction, the impacts would be lesser than if we were to push in some other directions. But make no mistakes, it is challenging, given how thin the site is. And then also, just to point out that we spent a good deal of time working on additional landscaping improvements all along the Tarhune, as well as Harrison side. There will be separate walking paths and walking areas for the residents on our properties themselves with improved landscaping, as well as beautification of this particular frontage along Harrison, and we will be introducing and building out sidewalk space that it currently is lacking along both Tarhune, as well as Harrison itself.
So there will be a full sidewalk going along?
Correct, correct, along the exterior of our property. And so then the sidewalk will then be able to link up with the sidewalk as it exists today in front of the bank pad.
And the parking lot is just a surface parking lot?
Correct, the parking lot is surface parking. That's right. We have a traffic engineer here who will also better address the topic of parking, but I recognize that it is a sensitive issue. The number of spaces we're providing here are 53 spaces. Based on certain state requirements, RSIS, the required ratio for assisted living, as generally accepted, is 0.5, so half a space per unit, or one space per every two units. So based on that RSIS requirement, our required parking spaces would be 45. And so in our application, we're showing that we're providing eight spaces above the minimum requirement for our use.
Do your residents drive, Mr. Leon?
No, as I mentioned earlier, because of the advanced age and the particular acuity and need of our residents, almost none of them drive. The parking spaces are used almost entirely for visitors, so family members, as well as staff. I'll touch on staff briefly, and just talking a little bit about how we operate our business. So as you can imagine, caring for frail seniors is no easy task, but we have a great deal of experience, and as proven by J.D. Power, it's reflected in the satisfaction of our residents. We have, at any sunrise, a combination of both management staff, as well as frontline staff who provide care. Those who provide direct care work on shifts, similar to as you would imagine at a hospital and such. For us, our shifts are threefold, so we have a peak shift that is off-peak hours, traditionally understood. So our shifts start at 7:00 a.m. and end at 3:00 p.m., and these can certainly be adjusted if necessary, or as desired, on the margins. But 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then second shift is from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and then overnight shift is from 11:00 back to 7:00. And so in terms of broader overall traffic impacts, it's been our experience is that our use as assisted living is relatively low impact from a traffic scenario, both for the lack of driving from our residents, as well as from the off-peak shifting of our primary caregivers. Finally, let me address a little bit regarding the building itself. And so as you've seen from Boards A4 and A5, it's our utmost effort to provide a space that looks and feels like home, looks and feels like something that you would want your mother to live in, and you would be recognizable as home. However, the structural integrity of the building itself is much more institutional. It's protective. We, for this project and for almost all of our projects, build with steel and concrete. We build to an I-2 fire protection standard, which allows for, in the event of a fire, we do not need to evacuate the residents. Rather, there are fire doors that will section off portions of the building, and we are then able to help move residents to the nearest overall area where the fire doors close, protect them, and we can...
Does that bring those through on?
Yes, that is correct. And then we can wait for rescue. This is really important, because as you can imagine, it's very, very difficult in 2:00 in the morning to try and evacuate Mrs. Smith, who's 90 and might have memory loss. And so we recognize that safety and security is of the utmost importance, and that's one of the major benefits that you'll have with our project, is that it is on the outside residential in character, but on the inside, built structurally to be institutional in nature. Let me see. Okay. I will be wrapping up soon. So one of the things we wanted to discuss was also the design of the building. A5?
I believe A6.
A6. A6 is a rendering of the proposed project that was, was it submitted?
Yes.
Okay, so it is a rendering of the project as has been submitted. I'm not sure if everyone has had a chance to see something like this, but we've shown it previously at meetings with neighbors, and it corresponds with the design plans.
Who prepared that, Mr. Leon?
This was prepared by our architects from JSA, and we have a member from JSA here today who can speak more specifically and will testify to the various characteristics and aspects that went into the design process. And so there's a great deal of alterations and changes in material and a breakdown of the scale by using different material types, as well as different angulations and different design aesthetics, which our architects will testify to. As you can see, the sign is here on the corner. I think that was previously identified. So one of the things we wanted to also bring up is that impressions of a building can change depending on comparably minor architectural design shifts. And so, one, I'm gonna show another board, which we'll label as A7.
So A6 was the proposal that was submitted to the board?
Correct, A6 is the proposal.
And what's the genesis of A7?
So A7 was an additional rendering that is of essentially the same submitted proposal as A6. So the building itself, footprint, unit count, total square footage is exactly the same. However, as we were considering the application and thinking about some of the impacts on neighbors and the surrounding areas, one of the things we discussed with the architects were, how can, through the efforts of intelligent designing, design work, we begin to break down scale even further? And in one particular aspect is, I looked at it in A6 and thought, these gables are very large. They're not functional in any meaningful way. The units certainly aren't in the peaks of the gables, but they represent just additional visual size. And so A7 represents just a slightly different tweak on the same building, but an adjustment where the gables begin to be dropped down into more classic dormer-style layout.
Did this affect the overall height of the building?
Yes, so, correct. So it does begin to also bring down the height of the building by, I believe, about five feet in total, because what happens is that the roof is set further back. So it's not merely the drop from the top of the gable to the top of the dormer, but there's also kind of a step-back roof element. So that would be five feet. But the drop from the gable to the tip of the dormer itself is actually 11 feet, so it's even much more significant than that.
But the overall height would come down, I think it was 49 feet in the application?
Correct, it'll be to 44. It'll be about 44.
But the 11-foot, it'd be 11-foot, shouldn't it?
Correct, correct. And so this would just need to be replicated on other sides of the building. We did this for demonstration purposes.
Chair, do you want to put them side by side? It might be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
And so we bring this to reflect the fact that Sunrise is most passionate about the services that we bring. We're passionate about our mission. We care most about being able to care for more seniors. Design is important to us, but it's certainly an element that can evolve, and it's something that we look to as good design is always improving. And so we recognize that part of the reason we bifurcated the application was to provide additional potential space for improvements in design as a whole, whereas the fundamental use, the way we intend to ultimately operate the site, is something we wanted to bring here today. We're fully committed to the project as is, but we respect the fact that there are other ways to help potentially mitigate impacts, just through good design. Finally, I just want to address briefly the affordable component, just because it got brought up earlier. I believe you're right in the sense that I don't know the particular code so well to be able to say if there's specific language causing anything to supersede. So I think, yeah, I don't have anything to add to that discussion. However, what I do want to describe is just the fact that the way the Department of Health Medicaid waiver program works is that it allows for both residents who are low-income to have an ability to enter and be able to stay and live here at Sunrise, as well as it allows for an opportunity for residents who perhaps have stayed and live there for longer than the average length of time, and perhaps may have spent down funds, to be able to stay and continue at Sunrise as well. And so the reason why we think it's additionally beneficial to Princeton is that the affordable component also begins to satisfy COA requirements and fits into your affordable housing plan as a whole. This particular site was designated for a contribution to your affordable unit count.
You're saying that the town will get COA credit? And I know the special master will confirm that, that you will get a concomitant COA credit for these Medicaid beds?
And this begins to bring to reality the designation for this particular site as contributing to your affordable plan. So with that, that's the end of my formal presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
I do have a question on the affordable component, but I think we can, do you want to address that now or later?
Sure, now.
Oh, it's on. Okay. I have a question, just from my information, I guess, and everybody else's. How does the, in an affordable unit, in an assisted living facility, is the affordability on both the shelter, both the rental and the service?
Yeah. So the state Medicaid program provides a single payment sum that has to cover then both shelter and care, regardless of how much care is needed.
Okay, regardless of how much care is needed.
So it becomes a fantastic opportunity for the residents and for the locality. It is a significant financial burden.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm curious about the sidewalk on the perimeter. Is that wider than the existing? Is it wider than the typical in the neighborhood?
Yeah, so the sidewalk doesn't currently exist today. So there is no sidewalk on Tarhune or Harrison leading up to the corner from the developed area of the mall. So literally, the sidewalk just ends as you get onto the property.
But will it match like what's typical in the neighborhood? I think there's a sidewalk on the other side, though, right?
Yeah, our engineer will be able to specifically address it, but it will match what is there along the Harrison Street today.
Okay. And there's nothing proposed for that kind of dog-leg portion, that skinny?
I'm glad you brought that up. So one of the things that perhaps is not terribly clear in the site plan is that we will be proposing to build a walking path to allow then residents to be able to walk along Tarhune and then access the playground area, as well as the baseball fields, through the rear. And so there is an additional walking path that will be created, yeah.
You're removing a very large number of trees on that property. How are you taking care of that problem?
Yeah. So our engineer will better be able to address some of that. He has the specific counts.
He knows how to use a chainsaw and you guys, huh?
And we have various reports. Much of the site itself has been unkept, and so there's a great deal of, shall we say, refuse.
It's got brush and small trees and bigger trees all over.
Yeah, it's not, there's a lot of refuse on the site itself today. There's kind of dirt mounds, and when we sent our surveying team to do their work, we even encountered some remnants of a homeless encampment there.
Something you're not showing is the south side of this building, which is the one that faces the shopping center. And you've got very little setback, if I remember you telling me, on that side.
Yes.
What is the landscaping like in that arena? Is it sheltering a building from the shopping center?
Yeah, so that's a good question. We can, if there is a subsequent hearing, provide additional imagery to help you see that. There will be some screening that we will plant along the southern boundary. However, just note that the shopping center, the shopping center from our boundary onwards has also fairly significant tree cover before it enters into the parking lot area, and there's a fairly sizable grade shift between the two.
So how wide is the shopping center part of that?
Mr. Paul Castro, we have a staff, we have a question for you. The application is bifurcated.
It is.
But you are providing testimony now about site plan, and you have submitted documents which are titled "Site Plan." So...
We are not asking for site plan approval in this portion of the application. We are not asking for site plan approval in this portion of the application, but we have provided much information that would be required to the extent we were actually here for site plan approval because we think it's fair to the board and to the public to see site plan data almost in full. We are almost in full compliance with, I submit, as though we were asking for site plan, which is unusual, and we spent a lot of money to do that. It's just fair to the board and fair to the public.
All right, and but tonight.
We are bifurcating them.
All right, but tonight you're asking the board for the use variances, the D variances, and the bulk variances as well?
We've noticed for them, whatever the board's pleasure, we think they're subsumed. Many of them are subsumed within the D variance, and as you know, there's law to that extent. We've nonetheless noticed for them, in case you want to hear it.
We recognize that, given the underlying use change and given the unique nature of this particular piece of property, it's abnormally shaped, it's in the shape of an L, it's relatively thin. We're asking for variances on both height as well as use as well as density. And so, our purpose was to help provide as much detail as possible to show you that we put a great deal of thought and effort into what the final product should be and hoping to utilize the final product and the intended final uses in order to help justify the reasons for some of these variances.
I have two questions. Just to be clear, this is, these renderings are showing us the north side and the west side, is that right?
Correct, from the intersection.
In the peak shift of, how about, how many employees would you have?
So with peak shift, it will be approximately around 35 employees.
And how many residence units do you have? I know it's in here, but I, just remind you.
The current proposal has 89 units.
I had a question, since you brought up the site selection issues and you are asking for a use change from a site that's effectively, you know, zoned for senior housing into something that's more assisted living, which is, you know, proximal, immediately proximal to one of our largest commercial areas. I'm wondering, and also, as you pointed out, has great transit access. You mentioned that in the context of staff coming to the building, but I'm wondering, to what extent is that proximity of value to the residents who are there during the day?
Yeah, it's a great question. It's fantastic values. So, we're not expecting our residents to use the newly-created walking path, but we have a fully dedicated employee who is an activities and volunteer coordinator. Their sole job is to fill out the activities calendar and help bring residents to various things off-site, various trips. Frequently, these would be to the bank, to some like grocery shopping, to just fun things. And so, the proximity to the Princeton Shopping Center allows for us to make those adventures and those endeavors much more frequent. And certainly, for visiting family members, it's just a great place to then take mom for lunch or for some light shopping and then be able to return without having to traverse outside of the bounds of Princeton or a fair distance away.
I have a question about the parking. So the, you said you have 53 spaces, 35 staffs, so that difference is expected to account for visitors and deliveries and all that without spilling?
Yes, yes. So our traffic engineer can address some of that more specifically. Amongst the 35 employees, on average, for peak shift, right, many of those are frontline employees, some will be taking public transportation, other carpool together, and so it's not really a one-for-one ratio in terms of drivers. But yes, generally speaking, that 0.5 ratio is best accommodates both visitors as well as professional uses and.
Based on your experience in other facilities as well, right?
Yes, correct. Within our experience across our other 23 Sunrises in New Jersey, this ratio is good.
Will you be having a planner testify this evening?
We will.
Okay, thank you.
Does your peak shift for employees overlap with peak visiting hours or are they counter to one another?
Yes, so, visiting hours tend to stretch throughout the broader hours of the full day. They tend not to correlate around a specific time because, as you can imagine, most of the children of our residents, you know, few, some still work, but many don't work anymore. And so, their schedules tend to be a bit more open for visits and they tend to be off-peak hours from traditional perspectives of work and school and such.
Maybe we should move on.
See the public? Are there questions from?
Do you want other people, you're getting other people to talk to us? Or this is all?
Are there questions from the public, Mr. Chairman? I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, I will, I'll.
Yeah, we have, I have nothing, I have nothing further for this witness.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, there are members of the public quite clearly who want to talk to this. We have a microphone in the front. You can come one by one. You'll need to.
Wait, wait, wait.
I want to hear.
Sorry? I'm sorry? They told me that they wanted to go with this.
No, I, I'm not, Mr. Paul Castor. You had indicated you have some witnesses who are from out of town. Don't you want to present them all?
If it's the board's pleasure, whether you wanted to break it up, if you have questions for this witness that's from the audience, that's entirely obvious to the board.
I think, I think it would be better. Yeah, I think we should hear.
You would rather do that?
Oh, yeah.
The applicant said no.
Excellent.
Everybody will get the opportunity to be heard.
We'll call our next witness.
You'll call your next witness?
Sure.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to sit down. I think we're going to hear from the architect?
From our, our engineer is next, Mr. Chairman.
The engineer?
Architect, traffic, and planning, time permitting.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. Let's get him sworn in and then.
Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Jeremy Lang from Mazur Consulting.
Sir, if you'd raise your right hand, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
And your role in this project, please?
I'm the civil engineer for this project.
And your credentials?
Certainly. So I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm a certified floodplain manager. I'm a engineering expert witness and a certified municipal engineer. I have experience in testifying in over probably 70 municipalities and I have testified in Princeton before.
Okay, we have no problem. Let's go.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So as has been discussed, this is a bifurcated application, so I'm not going to do quite as deep a dive into the engineering as I would normally do if this was a full-on site plan application. That said, if there are questions, if there's something specific you'd like to hear more detail on, please let me know and I'd be happy to take a much deeper dive into any given issue. Not going to bore you too much with the location. We've got Exhibit A3, which has already been put into evidence. Just to refresh everybody, north is to the bottom of the sheet, so kind of the opposite of the normal convention. Turhune Road runs left and right on the bottom of the sheet. On the right side of the sheet, Harrison Street North runs up and down. The shopping center is to the south of us on the top. And then out off the picture, on the, on the bottom of the sheet to the north, is the medical office complex. The overall site is just over four and a half acres. As was noted, though, the site is very curiously shaped. It has an L or an elbow-type shape. So the site actually goes up on Exhibit A3 all the way up to the top of the exhibit here, comes down and then hooks around to the right, heading to the west toward Harrison Street North. So you'll see of the overall site, we're only using a fraction of the site area. And that's important because the site is not uniform. If you go out and you walk the site, what you'll find is that this section of the site where the development is proposed, so in other words, the westerly portion, has been previously disturbed. In fact, a significant portion of it's actually cleared, just some meadow grass and whatnot. You'll notice when you go out there, you'll see there's dumping, there's various construction debris, there's concrete, pavement, steel, debris of that nature. The vegetation, there are some trees there, but there, a lot of them are non-native species. They're secondary growth, they're much smaller in diameter. However, as you move to the east on the site, and then particularly in this whole quarter, the other leg of the L, if you will, that's on the easterly side, the vegetation is much more mature, the trees are much larger in diameter, and you do not have that dumping and that other evidence of disturbance. So what we've done is we've concentrated development or clustered the development in the disturbed portion of the site, and we've then maintained the highest quality portion of the site is remaining untouched. So a couple of things that you should be aware of, there are a couple easements on the site, or really three altogether. So we have a 50-foot-wide ingress and egress easement that runs on the, I'll call it the westerly elbow, but on the southerly side of that. Then we have a similar 50-foot-wide easement that runs on the easterly leg of the L, and that's on the easterly side of that. And then within that 50-foot easement, there's another 20-foot utility easement for PSENG and the telephone company, and there are some poles there with, you know, the various wires on them. As I've already noted, there are clearings, dirt roads, stockpiles, dumping, secondary growth. We even found, when our surveyors were out there, they found evidence of a squatter living on the site, the tarp and, you know, the whole nine yards. So that's kind of, gives you a lay of the land of what's out there. So in terms of the zoning, we've discussed that, it's the residential senior market. It's a residential cluster zone, multifamily zone. This is, in a sense, a cluster development, not literally as called for in the ordinance, but you could see the similarities between the two. We are clustering the residences together in a relatively small footprint. The ordinance calls for it to be age-restricted. By its very nature, this type of use is age-restricted. In fact, as Jerry just testified, the average age is around 85, so it's actually significantly older than the, I believe it's 62 required in the ordinance. In terms of the density, the maximum density in the ordinance is 11 units per acre. We are higher than that when you look at it as units, but our units are a little different. They're really rooms as opposed to units. So if you called it a typical multifamily development, would have two rooms in it, I mean the average room size, that would essentially make your density here compliant. You'd be about 10 units per acre with this particular use. So while it's not calculated that way, and we certainly need the density variance, but I'm just saying there is a comparison that you can make one relative to the other and realize that the number of people here is actually similar to that which would be permitted in the ordinance.
But it's also floor area ratio.
Yes, that's correct. Because it's not just a straight-on residential use, it is an institutional use, it is a use providing some advanced care, there is a lot more floor area necessary than you would have in a typical housing unit where the only purpose is shelter. Here, it goes way beyond shelter. I don't want to repeat all the testimony that Jerry just put on, but with all that additional service comes additional floor space. So we have an assisted living use here. As Jerry noted, this would be a defend-in-place type of use. It's an industrial, excuse me, not industrial, institutional use, so it's built with concrete and steel, it's not stick-built. In terms of the total size, it's three stories, 89 units, and up, and in that 89 units could be up to 110 beds because there is the potential for two beds in some of the rooms. The footprint, the first floor footprint is the largest, is 31,476 square feet. The total gross floor area is 82,573 feet, plus or minus. Of those units, of those beds, I should say more correctly, 10% will be for use by Medicaid-eligible individuals. And I will note that that Department of Health law is a shall statement. It doesn't say, you know, up to or at least or something like that. It's a very definitive shall statement. And in my experience, those units, those Medicaid beds do count and meet the full affordable housing obligation. I'm not the lawyer, so I'll certainly defer to Mark and the rest of the legal counsel here. But in my next life, that would be, that is certainly my experience and, like I said, the statute reads very clearly. In my opinion, this site is well-suited for it. I'm going to go through now how it's well-suited and why it's well-suited. At the same time, while we think we've got an excellent design here, and I'm about to explain why everything is the way it is, the reason we came in, or part of the reason we came in as a bifurcated application is because we are open to change. So while this is the application that we're making, if the board felt that we should do something differently, we have the opportunity to do that because we're not locked in on a full site plan at this point. So if there is something you want us to explore, please let us know, we'd be happy to do that. Even to get to this point, there have been a multitude of concept plans. In fact, I've actually fully engineered the site twice with two entirely different layouts. So there's definitely plenty of opportunity for change. Don't feel like it's this or nothing, even though that is, you know, from a legal perspective, that's our application, but we would be open to changes if requested. So I'll just jump right into the design and how and why it works. So first is in terms of access. One of the things we looked at is our location is right at Harrison and Turhune. Everybody knows there's a traffic signal at that corner. So that presents a unique challenge in terms of access to Harrison Street. As you make a right, first of all, you couldn't make a left in, it's a divided roadway at that point, so that limits that type of a movement. And then, as you come up to the intersection, there are actually dedicated lanes. There's a dedicated left, dedicated through, dedicated right. So that makes a exiting movement has some challenges because now, unless there happened to be going right onto Turhune, they now have got to cross a lane and they have to do it in a very short amount of distance from where our driveway would be to the traffic signal. Therefore, we ruled out accessing Harrison. I do have concepts that go there and certainly possible, but we felt from a traffic circulation and traffic safety standpoint, that on balance, it was better to go to Turhune. So now that said, we, well, you certainly don't have to have multiple access points. It always makes things easier and more convenient to have multiple access points. So even though we weren't going to have a second, if you will, access on Harrison, we did want to create two access points on Turhune. So then we looked at Turhune, where do we want to put these access points? One very logical spot is the medical center driveway, which is located about in the center on the bottom of Exhibit A3. You can't really see it because of the coloring there, but trust me, there's a driveway there leading to the medical offices. So we lined up our main driveway directly opposite of there, so it creates a very traditional four-way intersection. This reduces the number of conflict points. It gives good visibility to people entering the roadway from both sides. The second point, then, we shifted down, and this has kind of a balance point, too, where we're across from a wooded area on the medical campus. To our east here, we have a significant wooded area of about 140 feet, and as I testified earlier, this is the very mature woods. This is not a sparse or, you know, partially vegetated, this is a very heavily, both understory and the taller, very mature trees. So we're preserving all that. So by keeping the driveway not too far to the east, we're preserving all that vegetation and then not having it too close to the other driveway, we're not having conflicts between those two driveways. So we think we struck the balance, pretty much right in the middle, between our northeast corner, property corner, and the location of our center or main driveway. So we pretty much split the difference, and that's how we came to have that second driveway location. Now, the main driveway is a little wider, it's a 27-foot-wide throat, where our secondary driveway is 24-foot. We wanted to have that driveway be a little wider just to help with turning movements, make it very convenient. As you come in, you have an immediate option where you can either go to the right and access the portico chair if you're doing some kind of drop-off or pick up, whatever the case may be. And then to the left, you enter the main parking field. One of the things you'll notice, in fact, you can kind of compare and contrast it right on Exhibit A3, you'll see the kind of standard parking layout on the shopping center next door to the south of us. It's got the, you know, the rows, the trees, very little in the way of landscaping, it's pretty much a sea of asphalt. You'll notice what we did here in our parking lot is we broke it up, and in fact, we created a center island feature, which serves a couple of different purposes, but one is to break up the sea of asphalt effect. The other thing you'll notice is that the buffering on Turhune is pretty substantial. We're not just five or 10 feet off the roadway, we're significantly set back here to provide a very healthy buffer from the roadway to the parking lot. Another thing I'll point out is, when you look at the parking lot kind of as an island and you look all around it, you'll see you've got the trees, both our proposed buffering as well as the. you'll see you've got the trees, both our proposed buffering, as well as the existing wooded area on the shopping center site to the south. When you go to the east, you've got that 140 feet on our property of that very mature woodland area. When you go to the north, you've got another woodland area across the street associated with the medical office. And then when you go to the west, you've actually got our building. So the building itself is, not only is it a building, but in this case, it's acting as a, a sound and a visual barrier to the parking lot. Um, along that lines, the building is also, um, buffering our, what is arguably our first or maybe second, uh, most intense outdoor use, which is the main entrance at the Portico share. So that, the parking and the main entrance are both completely hidden behind the building, uh, as viewed from Harrison, and then, um, within these wooded areas on all those sides. Um, another thing to notice is the loading and the refuse area, uh, has been located together, and that's located here in the southerly portion of the site, about in the center of the developed area. And one of the things we did there, first of all, we've put it as far away from Turhune Road as we can. So we've, we've buried in the back. Uh, we've also centered it between the single-family homes, uh, to the east or west of us. So if you look, uh, to the east of us, the next single-family home is right here. To the west of us, the single-family homes are across Harrison, and that loading and refuse area is about exactly between them. Um, and then in either direction, uh, to the east, we've got that nice wooded area buffering it. And then, um, to the, uh, to the west, we didn't have the advantage of that wooded area. But what we did do, this wing of the building is pulled forward, pulled toward the retail. And it's actually one of the variances, one of the bulk variances that we have, um, because this is technically our rear yard in this area, and we're about, uh, 18 or 19 feet off the property line there. But what that allows to happen is the building itself, this wing of the building, comes across and blocks that loading zone and refuse area, so it is not visible, um, to Harrison Street.
Could you just make a comment about emergency vehicle access?
Certainly.
If you have a fire or something like that?
Absolutely. Um, as has been, um, described already, the, it's a concrete and steel building. It's fully, uh, sprinkled, so it, the, the building is, uh, you know, set up to defend itself. But you've got, uh, three-sided access from the two public streets, and then of course, from the, uh, Portico share area. Um, we haven't currently done it, because again, this is not site plan, but if the fire department wanted a, um, a fire lane in the back, that is something we could do. We've got a number of ways to hide or, or make aesthetically pleasing fire lanes that can support a, a full-on fire truck. And in my experience, normally, they don't want to put the equipment that close to the building. Um, so I suspect they probably won't want that, but if they did, or if they wanted some other, uh, form of access there, we can certainly accommodate it. Um, as I've noted before, I've even got versions of this layout where we've got a full-on driveway going to Harrison. Um, I don't think that's the best alternative, uh, but there are, it's certainly possible to do. And, and we would certainly work with your, um, fire department during the site plan phase. So we've talked about vehicular access. Um, I want to talk a little bit about pedestrian access. On Harrison Street North, there's already an existing sidewalk on our frontage, relatively new, uh, recently installed. What we're gonna do is pick up from that point, from the intersection, and then run across our entire frontage with a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk, um, all the way down to the east, uh, at the end of our property line. Roughly at the end of our property line, there is an existing, uh, walkway that leads to Grover Park. Uh, it's very overgrown. There's a, uh, kind of a dilapidated gate across it right now. Um, our proposal is to clear that, um, and then resurface it, most likely with a stone dust type of, sort of something that would be accessible, uh, and that would run our, the entire length of that, you know, L, if you will, um, to Grover Park. We would even be willing to extend it into Grover Park. There's a, there would be a little bit of a connection left in, on the parklands itself. So if the, uh, Princeton would like us to do that, I think we would continue it through, and that would get you to that softball field that's on that end of, uh, Grover Park. So that's kinda the external, um, pedestrian circulation, but we've also got an internal pedestrian circulation. Um, the two are connected. Right next to the main, uh, access driveway, you'll see sidewalks. So there are sidewalks going from the roadway sidewalk system to the internal sidewalk system. And that internal sidewalk system, um, does two things. One, it makes a complete loop around the building, uh, and then also it goes into the parking lot. And it doesn't just hit the edge of the parking lot, but it actually goes into and through the parking lot. And one of the features of that center-island I referred to earlier is that there's a, a nice sidewalk that goes clean through it to get you to the other side, um, minimizing the crossings of the driveway aisles. So, and where we do have those crossings, you'll see we've got striped crosswalks, uh, for pedestrian safety. Uh, in terms of the total number of parking stalls, there are 53, uh, total stalls. Um, three of those are handicap accessible, which means the accessibility requirements. Um, the total number required is based on the RSIS, and that is a total 45 required stalls. So we are exceeding that, uh, minimum required by eight stalls. Uh, as Jerry testified, um, Sunrise has tremendous experience in this area, so they know, not only is that the rule of the land, but they know that that actually works in real life, um, because of the, of the type of operation they have. Uh, in terms of the size, they are 9 by 18. Again, this is specified by the RSIS. Um, I will point out to you that, um, parking here is relatively low turnover. Uh, you don't have shopping carts. It's not like you're going to the Home Depot or something here. Um, so you don't need those, those larger stalls. Uh, also, you'll notice, unlike the shopping center, uh, above us, where the stalls are kinda head-on, all of our stalls are against the landscaped area. So even though they're not paved the, the longer width, they do have that effective width, because you, you have the overhang at the curb. So then that's, in that sense, they are meeting the ordinance, even though they're not literally, um, doing that. Um, I already noted the loading zone. There's a 20 by 35 loading zone, and that's immediately in front of our refuse and recycling, uh, dumpsters. Um, those are in a masonry enclosure. Um, that masonry enclosure will be finished with a, uh, very similar finish to the building. So whatever the, uh, the architect will go through the, uh, facades of the buildings, it'll be a very similar masonry facade, so that the two, uh, match together.
That's a daily pickup?
Uh, not necessarily a daily pickup. Uh, they, they'll schedule the pickups. It'll be a private hauler, so they'll pick it up. They'll figure out kinda what works for the amount of generation per facility. Typically, it's two to three times a week.
Okay, done a week?
Yeah, it wouldn't, wouldn't normally be daily, though. Um, as I've already noted, the, the layout itself is buffering that, not only buffering that area, but really buffering all of our active areas. So whether it's the courtyard, where residents might have an outdoor experience or an outdoor activity that's surrounded, uh, by the building, the main entrance is blocked by the building and by the mature woods, as is the parking and the, um, refuse and loading area. The building itself is very innocuous. Um, unlike, um, other types of uses, you, you don't have, you're not gonna have loud parties and this type of thing. Plus, it's a steel and concrete, um, construction. So noise just doesn't permeate the walls and the windows, uh, like it does in a single-family home, just because of the nature of the construction, uh, just that frankly, the mass of the building absorbs, uh, a lot of sound. In terms of the setbacks, on Harrison Street North, the, uh, front setback there is approximately 39.7 feet. On Turhune Road, it's approximately 20 feet. And then, um, what is considered a rear setback, uh, to the south here, um, and, and this only occurs right at the, at this, um, easterlymost wing, is approximately 18.8 feet. Uh, so to go through a few other things, um, there are no flood hazard areas located on the site. Um, there's a branch of the Harry's Brook, uh, located on the medical office property across the street. There is a flood hazard area associated with that. Uh, but based on the elevations, uh, from that, it does not actually impact Turhune Road. Comes close, but doesn't impact Turhune Road in, in terms of being a mapped flood hazard area, uh, and certainly does not extend onto the site. Um, in terms of freshwater wetlands, there are no known, uh, freshwater wetlands on the site itself. Uh, when you're out there, you'll realize that it's actually kind of a ridge. When you're standing here in the center, um, about where I'm highlighting now, the southerly quartile, if you will, the site's about the top of the ridgeline. So, um, from that southerly quartile to the south, it drains toward the retail. And then from that same location to the north, it drains toward, uh, Turhune Road. And the fall there is around, uh, maybe goes from roughly elevation 165 to elevations 154 to 157, uh, within the developed area. Uh, we've done some geotechnical work on the site. Uh, we haven't completed that program yet, because we don't have the final site plan, and this, this is part of why it gives us some flexibility, because we haven't spent all the time and money to do the full geotechnical program, to do a full stormwater design. Uh, so that allows us, we can move pieces around, uh, without it being extraordinarily expensive to the applicant. Uh, but we have done some preliminary work, so we understand what we're dealing with. Um, there is some fill on the site, the upper level of the site, and many locations has some fill, which is mostly gravel and sand. Uh, under that, the, uh, the indigenous soil is a silt and clay, and then that is over a weathered bedrock, and then finally, uh, a competent bedrock below that. Um, in terms of stormwater management, this project is considered a major development, uh, so it is subject to those requirements, uh, under the RSIS stormwater requirements. Uh, one of the things you'll notice when you review the plan, we are implementing a green infrastructure approach. Um, that's not currently mandated, although there is a stormwater rule change pending with the DEP that would make it mandated. Um, in fact, I had a hand in writing that. I, under a DEP grant, I wrote a, a model ordinance. That was administered by the Brick Township Municipal Utilities Authority, and a piece of that model ordinance has actually been incorporated into, um, the proposed stormwater rule. So that's in legal review right now with DEP, uh, the state rules, this is, seven colon eight. Um, so it hasn't come out yet. It's not the rule of the land, but it, it's coming. Uh, green infrastructure is definitely where the state is headed. I'm also on a couple of different stakeholder groups with the DEP, um, both for the rule adjustment as well as to update the Best Management Practices Manual. Um, one of the key things there is that, uh, a big part of green infrastructure is infiltration or recharge, um, and that raises issues such as groundwater mounding. And currently, the BNP manual does not really, uh, address that per, well. So there's a significant change to the BNP manual being worked on. Um, again, I, I'm one of the stakeholders that is writing that, uh, and that will address how groundwater mounding is modeled. But because I have this kinda unique perspective, uh, we've started to apply it already to this application. Um, one of the key things, another key thing with green infrastructure is decentralization. So we're trying to treat stormwater where it falls. So you'll see that when you look at the plan, there's stormwater treatment literally from one side to the other. So starting on the west side, in the courtyard area, we've got five different rain-garden areas. Um, and we'll actually incorporate that. That'll be part of the amenities for the residents. They'll be able to grow different, um, plant materials in there and, you know, experience, kinda commune with nature, if you will. Uh, but at the same time, treat stormwater runoff in a very efficient and highly effective manner. Uh, as you move to the center of the site, the main entrance, um, one, we'd like to set off the main entrance, so it's nice to have it as a paver area, but, uh, because we're doing it in pavers, it's very easy then to make it permeable paver. So this entire, um, paver area in the center of the site will be permeable paver, so that will allow stormwater to soak right through it, uh, as opposed to run off, um, the surface. Um, as you move into the parking area, we've got a combination of approaches. There are two underground detention systems, um, one in each of the two, uh, north-south bays. Depending on our final geotechnical work, they may have recharge components, or one of them may. Uh, we have to go ahead and see what depth the groundwater is, what the permeability of the soils are, how much water it can handle. Um, but what we can definitely do is rain gardens in this center-island. So on either side of the sidewalk that runs east-west, uh, we've got another, a couple rain gardens, uh, proposed. Um, it's not shown on the plan, but, uh, having looked at the site, one of the things we want to deal with is along Turhune Road, right now, the, uh, stormwater runoff basically comes around this corner. Uh, the curb ends as you get away from Harrison, and the stormwater just, uh, dumps into the, kinda the edge of the wooded area there. It creates a mud pit, essentially. Um, so you're getting erosion, you're getting suspended solids are being picked up, and they're eventually being, um, carried to an inlet that's down on the easterly end of our front of Turhune. Um, so while the water will still go there, our intent will be to capture that water, uh, perhaps in a swell, like a bio-swell, uh, and then we'll, once that, it goes through that process, perhaps along the building, uh, then we'll put it into the pipe and connect it to the inlet where it always flowed. Um, but it'll get some treatment, it'll stabilize that area, and kind of eliminate that, um, that stagnant water, and like I said, the, uh, the erosion that's happening in that area. Um, in terms of utilities, uh, it's fairly straightforward.
Excuse me, Jeremy?
Yes?
Before you leave stormwater, if I could just ask one question?
Sure.
If I could be sworn in? Yes, I do. So I know this is not site planned. We have not reviewed the stormwater. You have not submitted a stormwater plan, but we've met on a couple of occasions to talk about this application. One of the concerns is, uh, existing flooding that we have coming from the shopping center onto Grover. Um, can you just give a, a brief overview as to what impact this development would have on that existing drainage problem?
Uh, the simple answer is none. Um, as I just explained, we're a ridge, so we're kind of up in the air. Um, if you were to go, if you were to go and stand in the parking lot here for the shopping center, you're looking up at the site. It is significantly up the hill. Um, so the stormwater, and Grover is, is not shown on this plan, but it's off to the, uh, to the east here, to the left of the exhibit. So the shopping center's here, Grover's here, and the flow is going this way. Uh, so we're, we're simply not in that flow path. Um, it, it would be possible, though, for us to contribute to the problem if we were increasing our stormwater runoff rate. Um, we are not doing that. We, the, uh, methods I just proposed will at least meet and most likely significantly exceed the stormwater reduction requirements. So just to give you a little background, without going too far into site plan, the state stormwater rules, uh, require you to do more than just meet the existing conditions. You actually have to reduce the peak rates of flow for the 210 or 100-year storm. Um, and that's, uh, 50, um, 75, and 80% uh, of those flow rates. So we'll at least meet that standard. With green infrastructure, often we can do better than that, uh, especially if you count infiltration, um, in, in the mix there. So, and of course, infiltration will be the reality. Uh, that's another change, though. In the current BNP manual, they don't allow you to count infiltration, and that's because they have no way to deal with groundwater mounding. Like I said, we are in the process of fixing all that, so infiltration will then be able to be counted, um, going forward. So in addition to just raw detention, we will also have infiltration on the site.
So, but all the water from this site will eventually get into Harry's Brook and move downstream. You're retaining it on, or detaining it on-site, but it will eventually, weather control, most probably, go into Harry's Brook and flow further down?
Uh, absolutely, and that's exactly what it does today. Uh, these are C and D soils on the site, so they're not high infiltration soils. It's not that no water goes into the ground, uh, but it's not that much water, so in...
But it floods. I mean, that whole area, as you go downstream, not necessarily on Grover, on Grover, but as you get further down, there's flooding.
Yeah, there's no doubt. When you look at the FEMA mapping, uh, the extent of the, the mapping that was done on that branch of the brook, it's evident that it's flooding in the area. Uh, and it's not surprising, because again, the nature of the soils in the area, they're not highly absorptive. If you're down in OSHA County, for instance, that you've got a lot of sand, so the water goes right in the ground. That's not this soil here. Here, we've got a, a silt and clay, uh, on top of a weathered bedrock, on top of competent bedrock. So these are not conducive to recharge.
And I don't want to dwell too long on this either, but, but ultimately, you're going to reduce the rate of flow off of the site.
Correct.
Okay. No exacerbation?
Correct, no exacerbation, and, and we will actually reduce the peak rates. Which, which is required by law, and it's not, you know, it's not just goodness of our heart that is required.
It's both.
Both. So in terms of other utilities or sanitary sewer, uh, we have a six-inch sanitary sewer lateral, and that is connecting to the existing sanitary sewer main on Harrison Street North, uh, which is located on the far side of Harrison Street North. There's an existing manhole. Uh, in terms of water service, we have two separate water lines. There's a four-inch domestic line and a six-inch fire line, and those are both connecting to the water main on Turhune Road. Uh, as part of the fire protection plan, uh, that we drafted, we did have a hydrant test done, so all that data, uh, has been presented. Um, it's, that really would be reviewed during site plan, so it hasn't been reviewed yet, but there is, um, adequate flow in that area. Uh, we are also connecting to electric, telephone, and gas, uh, from Turhune. Uh, so in terms of landscaping and lighting, I'll just do a, again, we'll hit this a lot harder in the site plan, but I'll give you an overview now of what we're thinking. Um, first and foremost, one of the things we've done is we've cited the development on the, the poorest quality, uh, portion of the site. So while there are trees throughout the site, um, or at least on the edges, uh, the, the area where the development is located, the kinda center spine here is actually completely clear. If you're standing on Harrison, there's actually a chained-off, you know, gate, if you will, um, and you can look right down the spine of the site. It's, it's clear. What you'll see in the distance is stockpiles of, uh, broken-up pavement and concrete, um, things like that. Um, there are some trees around the edge. In fact, some of those trees are shown on the plan to be saved, uh, right on the perimeter. Uh, so we will endeavor to save as many of those as we can. Um, beyond that, though, we're proposing over 135 new trees in the proposed landscaping, over 600 shrubs, and over 1,500, um, ground cover, perennials, and grasses on the site. So a very heavily landscaped site. Um, you saw from all the renderings and the... You saw from all the renderings in the photos that Jerry put up, Sunrise prides itself on their, the look, the inviting nature of their developments. They want people to feel at home, because the bones of it, if you will, are not homey. There's concrete and steel, it's very institutional, so they like to cover that and make it look like a home even though it's not. So you've got the landscaping, and you've got the tremendous architecture facades that they do, and the, I don't want to step on the architect's toes here, so he'll get into what they're doing on the building, but what they're doing on the building is just as impressive as what they're doing in the landscaping. In terms of the lighting, again, state-of-the-art. All the proposed site lighting is LED. The, there are 22 14-foot-tall top, post-top urban lights, so it has that, you know, that nice look to it, good light distribution, and again, LED. Also, we have 66 Ballard lights. The mounting of the light is just over two feet, and the whole Ballard's about 40 inches tall. And those are lower, they're about 1,500 lumens, kind of equivalent to 100-watt incandescent bulb, but again, they are LED. The reason we use the Ballards is to provide lighting where we don't want to have a lot of glare, because the Ballard's so close to the ground, it's a great way to light a sidewalk or an area that needs light for security or safety, but it doesn't provide any spill. So that's why we've got so many Ballard lights and so few, or at least comparatively so few of the taller poles. And even the taller poles at 14 feet, those are still very short light poles. Typical shopping center would have 35, 40-foot poles. So at 14 feet, these are very residential in scale. We've done a point-by-point lighting analysis, and you'll see there's virtually no spillage. If anything gets across the property line, it's a tenth of a foot candle, which is really So I'll just address, the planners are going to do the actual variance criteria, but I'll just address from an engineering perspective, a couple of things as it relates to the variances. So as it relates to the use variance, as I've noted, there is some similarities in that it's essentially an age-restricted development by its very nature. Certainly clustered, because we've got all the residential units in a very small footprint, and it does meet the state-mandated affordable housing requirements in terms of the Medicaid beds. In terms of the floor area ratio, we do have a floor area ratio variance. There's several things, though, that have been done to minimize that. One, using the three-story building minimizes the footprint, so the amount of impervious coverage and the amount of land disturbance is minimized because we're at the three stories. We have an extensive green infrastructure stormwater management program to mitigate the coverage on the site. We are meeting the ordinance impervious coverage, so I don't believe we're overdeveloping the site as a whole, we're just doing it extremely efficiently, but that does yield the floor area ratio variance. In a very similar vein, we have a density variance, different measure of kind of the same thing. As I said to you before, though, these are really rooms per acre where the ordinance is for units per acre. So while a room and a unit are somewhat synonymous, they're really not the same thing. A multifamily unit would typically have two bedrooms, where in this case, we're calling every unit to be a one-bedroom unit.
Excuse me, Karen, or Derek? I'm talking into it here. It's on. In our ordinance, we have, in this, on this site, we have floor area ratio, not density, right? Or do we have both?
You have both.
You have both.
We have both in here? Okay.
Which is unusual, so certainly an anticipated question. In terms of the height, height allows us to do a few different things. It allows for more surface area. So for instance, we're able to have this extensive outdoor courtyard for the residents. So this way, they have a safe place to recreate. Again, as Jerry pointed out, we have several, or a significant component of them will be memory care type of residents, so having an area that is secure, we can have a fence across the, kind of the fourth leg of this, so you've got a large outdoor space that is secure and safe, and that's made possible by the fact that the building is three stories, because we're not covering that area now with building. It allows it to be that outdoor space, and it allows it to be, also function as that stormwater, the five rain gardens that are in this area. So we're getting multiple benefits out of that additional ground area that's generated by the height. Also, by having the three stories, we're able to minimize the footprint of disturbance, so we're able to save this whole leg of the L, if you will, which is no less than 140 feet from the property line to our nearest neighbor. So, and again, these are the highest-quality woods on the site over here on the east side. So again, that height, rather than having to spread the building and all the improvements all the way across, we're able to cut that short, about 140 feet short specifically of that easterly property line. And then that also allows us then to have that trail up to Grover Park, and to keep that trail in a more natural setting, consistent with a park. So it's not a sidewalk on a roadway, it's an actual trail in the woods. It makes a lot of sense when you're heading toward a park. In terms of the bulk variances, and again, I understand you may or may not act on these, but I'll just run through them. The parking stall size variance, this is governed actually by the RSIS, so it actually supersedes the Princeton ordinance for residential use, and we are complying. That said, we do effectively have the length, though, because all of our stalls are head-on to a landscaped area, so you've got the overhang at the curb. It's also a low turnover use by its very nature as opposed to like a shopping center. In terms of the sign, this is a different use than is anticipated in the ordinance, so it does make sense for an institutional use to have a little bit of a larger sign. You've got potential residents and their families trying to find the site, you've got visitors trying to find the site. So it's useful to have a larger sign so that it can be seen from a farther distance, especially because on Harrison, you've got a divided roadway, so a little bit of a larger sign helps with sight.
We don't think the building itself is a sign?
The, yes, I think the building itself is.
So a reasonable, standard sign rather than oversized one doesn't seem.
It's still a, it's still a small sign. It's 16 square feet is the total sign area, so as signs go, that is still a small sign. But the additional size allows it to be readable from some additional distance. So I think there's a, it's one of those balancing acts. It benefits outweighed a detriment, I think, in scale of the building, and in terms of readability from a distance, the additional size is beneficial. It's also, it's a ground sign, it's not a pylon sign, it's not some internally-lit sign where it's this, you know, bright, obnoxious sign, it's going to be, it's a very soft sign, if you will. In terms of the setback, it's five feet, but that's because of the way the right-of-way cuts the corner. If you take it from the right-of-way, the through right-of-way lines, it's actually about 10 feet off the right-of-way, where the standard is 15. This has to do, again, with the visibility. The farther back it is, the more steep the angle is from the roadway to view it, so you can't see it from as far away. And then in terms of the proposed height, we're actually, half of what's permitted, the permitted height is seven feet, we're at three and a half. So it is a much lower sign, and we're trying to offset for the proximity, both in terms of the setback and the size, by going with the shorter sign. In terms of the rear yard setback, as I mentioned before, the easterly wing of the building is where that setback variance is happening, and that is specifically to hide the refuse and recycling closure, as well as the loading zone that are located just to the east of Also, I'll note that in this area, even though we're a little closer to the property line, you do have the existing wooded buffer on the adjacent site. There is also a row of trees proposed on our property along that whole wing of the building there to help further buffer that. In terms of the minimum front yard setback, by having the 20-foot offset from Terhune, it allows the building to act as a, both a sound and a visual buffer from residents on Harrison Street to the main entrance, to the parking lot in the back. So by basically spanning the width, if you will, along Harrison Street, we've essentially created a giant sound wall. And the building itself, because again, this is concrete and steel, you're not going to hear noise emulating from the building, so this is going to be a very quiet, this facade, well, it'll be very aesthetically pleasing, but it'll be very quiet. There's not, there's no activity on the facade. The architect will talk about the mechanicals, they're all very well-screened, they're in the wells of the roof, so he'll go into that. But this will be a very quiet building from this perspective, and the building, the outdoor part, which of course we have to have, but that is located in the most remote portion of the site that we can realistically do, and like I said, the building itself, by being this full width, actually fully buffers it from Harrison Street.
Do you have much more to tell us?
Nope.
We've been listening to you for a very long time.
I'm on the very last thing.
And there are people in the audience who would also like to talk to us.
First time you've ever heard that. I've never heard that before. So the only other thing I'll mention is the number of parking stalls. Again, that's controlled by the Residential Site Improvement Standard. So that was actually the end of my testimony.
Good. Thank you.
Excuse me, Barry. Do you think we're going to get to the other two cases tonight?
I worry about that. At the rate we're going, we probably won't get them.
It doesn't look like we, Barry, we should, the board should have a discussion, probably.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Derek and I were going to bring this up. Since there are other applications tonight, I think the question for the board is, do you want to hear from the other two witnesses that Mr. Paul Castro has?
We will, we will have to come back with Paul Phillips is our.
Your planner?
Our last witness. We have two more witnesses for this evening, if it's the board's pleasure, Mr. Chairman, but we have one witness that we will have to bring back at the next meeting.
Anyway.
Our last witness, yes.
Okay.
Anyway. So that helps you.
So I think for the board, the public did come tonight, and I think certainly you should hear from them.
I think we have a significant number of people.
Exactly. But then after that, I think the board needs to decide, how much more testimony do you want to hear tonight, or carry this application to the next agenda? Because you have two other matters that are also scheduled for tonight.
That's right.
So.
I don't know. I mean, it's.
Perhaps if you hear, you have two more witnesses, and then there's probably 20 people in the audience, at that point, maybe if this case is adjourned, they have to come back anyway, and that might give us the opportunity to hear the other two cases that are on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
Well, okay, I mean, typically, typically, we wouldn't start a new case after 10:30.
I'm sorry?
Typically, we would not start a new case after 10:30, is that right? And if we've got two witnesses and the public, we should do that tonight. I mean, people are here, we should hear them. And, but do we want to keep the other applicants here? That's what I'm getting to. I'm sorry?
Perhaps, I don't know, is it, do you, maybe you put your planner on? I don't know, I don't want to tell you.
No, I think Mr. Paul Castro is saying he needs to come back, right?
We do need to come back regardless. We do have our architect who did travel from out of state, who was our next witness. If we could get him on, that would be tremendous, but we're recognizing you have other applicants, and we're not trying to dominate the hearing, of course.
Sure.
So I think you've got a couple of options. You can hear from one or more witnesses from Mr. Paul Castro, then hear public comment, or you can ask the applicant to stop their testimony now, still hear public comment, and then try and hear the other two applications tonight.
I would prefer the second.
I would, I would vote for that.
I really think we've got a lot of people here who want to make comments on this.
All right, Mr. Paul Castro, will that work for you?
Of course, of course.
All right.
And then.
Absolutely.
You can come back.
We're not, we're not going to, we're not going to hear the architect right now.
Okay, we'll bring him back.
Fine.
All right, so I think what we'll try and do is to hear those of you who wish to talk to this case as sensibly as we can.
Questions only now?
Try and talk as little as possible, overlapping what somebody else has said, and try and make zoning things. You'll have to be identified and swear to tell the truth, and then you can go one after the other.
My name is Louise Witonsky. I live up 450 Terhune Road. I've lived.
Roger, in hand, you swear or affirm your testimony to see him will be truthful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
You please swear last name.
I moved into the house in 1976 because I loved the property, which was wooded with a bucolic stream running through it, a stream that started on Thanet Road and a stream that I tested for many years to see that it was healthy. With all the rains that we have, the soil is getting super saturated these days, and whenever there is a heavy rain, my property, half of it in the lower area floods. The part that floods is the part that tries to get through the conduit. There's a pipe at the bottom of my property that goes under Terhune Road, and so the stream can continue. Well, that stream, that conduit cannot carry the heavy rains, and with a building with such a big footprint and with so many parking places added, is just going to add to the problem that we're having with floods. And as I said, in 1975, we had one of those 50- or 100-year floods. If that happens again soon, with more building like this, we're going to have greater problems. Now, my property, I try to keep it as a beautiful garden to encourage people to walk by. We get a lot of people walking by. We have a lot of young children walking. I don't know whether anyone has ever counted the number of people. The high school students run down the sidewalk, because there's only one sidewalk on that part of Terhune, or, and so they run. So there are a lot of children, and when they say they're not going to bring more traffic, why are they putting so many parking places in if they're not going to be bringing traffic? That corner is a very dangerous corner. One of my dearest friends was killed bicycling there. There was a young person walking, I read, in Town Topics into the shopping center and was killed going in there. The traffic getting into the shopping center is very dangerous. I mean, at Christmas time, it's really hazardous to go in there, and even at other times, that short entrance is fairly dangerous. They've reconfigured the stopping signs so that when people come in, now they're going to have more traffic that's going to be in that area, and the place that they seem to want to put the driveway on Terhune across from the medical group has those beautiful white pines that were planted there. Those white pines are magnificent. I've never walked the property, but on the side near the shopping center are beautiful catalpas. These are native plants. I don't know what they're planning on putting in, because so many of the plants that landscapers use are non-native. And what's happening with our birds in this world and our butterflies and our bees, because they're taking away all these wonderful spots like that location, they're, they're dying. This is a problem throughout the world, and Princeton, which is a leader, should be a leader, should not see that kind of thing happening in our backyard. That area should be left not so heavily developed. They said they want to integrate it into that area. Nothing is three stories in that area. I don't know what integration means if they're building something that's three stories.
Yes, absolutely.
Good. Thank you very much.
And I have, I have questions to ask the gentleman who spoke. I went on to look up Sunrise Corporation, and the gentleman who started it, it seemed as if he sold it to a big mega corporation. It's no longer the.
No, this is not zoning you're talking about.
Pardon me?
I want, what I'd like to know is, is is it concerned? You're concerned about trees? You're concerned about water?
I'm concerned about the.
Which is Mr. Woods?
The dangers of too much traffic, and I'm also concerned about the light pollution because.
I agree with you entirely.
So many of the animals, and I don't, I know in certain places, they have lighting that goes on and off automatically when people aren't around to prevent so much of that light pollution that is really, again, destroying our environment.
Good.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Same ritual. Name, swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Professor Royce. My name is Panagiotopoulos, P-A-N-A-G-I-O. My name is Panagiotopoulos, P.A.N.A.G.I.O.T.O.P.O.U.L.O.S. And I'm, I live, I own the property at the corner of Terhune Road and Grover Avenue, 389, 389 Terhune Road. I've lived there since 2006. I've lived in Princeton since 2000. And I must say, I am very worried and disappointed at the testimony I heard, because I think it does not address many of the very significant issues that this particular massive development will bring to the neighborhood. Specifically, the scale is completely unreasonable relative to even the commercial properties. The medical center, which is a two-story, laid-back, I don't know, maybe 200 feet from Terhune Road, very, very far, and much, much nicer scale. The shopping center, which is a, I think, a very historic and nice development, is all two-story, low-density. This massive building that I see, three stories, no less than on a ridge overlooking the whole neighborhood, is going to be really changing the character of the area, and it's going to bring traffic, certainly, a huge amount of traffic, including emergency ambulance traffic at all times of day and night. The civil engineer who presented suggested that the building itself will be a nice noise barrier between the back of the building and the traffic, the parking lot and the refuse collection with Harrison Street and the residences on that side, but they did not say anything about the many, many residents, including my own, that are on the east side of the proposed development, which are going to suffer significantly, I think, and which the, the current character of the neighborhood around Grover and Terhune is going to change very dramatically if this is allowed to go forward. The, so I, I have heard no justification whatsoever for asking for this specific number of units, for this specific size of the development. They are talking about, oh, if we make it three stories, we'll be able to make it with less footprint, but that assumes a constant volume. There is absolutely no reason to have this particular volume and size and number of units of the buildings, that I have heard, and I'd like to request that, that the board does not approve this application, which will really make real damage to a nice neighborhood in Princeton. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm David Weatherill. I live at 17 Governor's Lane. I do swear to tell the truth, but it is my opinion. Pardon me? Governor's Lane is right off of Terhune, and I am the president of Governor's Lane Association. But I'm bothered specifically by the tremendous variances that are requested. I'm used to zoning, I used to serve on a zoning board in another town, and small variances is one thing, but on floor area ratio, you're a huge variance, like 60% more. The density is double what the zoning, the height is 60% more than what the zoning permits. The setbacks are off, the parking is off. In general, my opinion is that it's, this proposal is running roughshod over our zoning, and if we're just going to surrender our zoning, then why have zoning? That's my opinion.
My name is, I swear to tell the truth, my name is Mitchell Osterer, O.S.T.R.E.R. On Grover, on Grover Avenue. First, on the use, I think the, the use that's now permitted takes advantage of the site. If there were independent living seniors there, they would be able to take advantage of the shopping center and be able to walk to shop, would be able to take advantage of the park. An assisted living development, the people are generally going to be bound to their residents. They may be taken out on some trips, but we wouldn't be taking advantage of that site. The reason, I assume, the master planners made that an RSM is so that it would take advantage of all of the things that are there. To allow an assisted living there really squanders some of the benefits that the site offers to senior living. As to some of the variances, I'm not going to repeat what others have said, but keep in mind that this site is a very prominent one. It's already high above McCaffrey's and the park. If you'd like, take a look at your topographical map, it's already 25 feet above the basketball court, it's 15 feet above McCaffrey's, so the height that you'd be giving it would be exacerbated by the fact that the site is already prominent. The parking analysis says nothing about traffic coming up Grover or coming down Van Dyke and Terhune. I've read the traffic analysis as best as I recall. All it talks about is loading at the, at the traffic light at Harrison and Terhune. But people are going to be coming down Terhune and Grover to get to this development. If, if you put on ways, if you're sitting in Kingston and you say, how do you get to Thane Circle, which is pretty close, I tried it, it said, go down Harrington Road, come down Van Dyke and down Terhune. Now, once people start, if the workers are going to figure out that going up Harrison, traffic lights in and out of the shopping center, they're going to start coming down Van Dyke and Terhune, or they're going to come up Grover? And how much traffic is that going to be? As to parking, there may be national standards, and then there are Princeton standards, and people in Princeton are different, I think. The fact is, I would guess that the people, some of the assisted living residents and the Princeton residents have home health aides. They don't just, they don't just accept what's there. So, are there going to be parking spots for those folks? Where are they going to be parking if they're private duty aides? No cars for the folks in assisted living? Suggest you talk to the people at Acorn Glen, talk to the people up at Stonebridge, and ask them how many cars their assisted living folks. That's where the Princetonians are, and I don't think all of assisted living people are giving up cars. I know some assisted living places where there's one spouse who needs dementia care, and then there's a much more functional spouse who's living in assisted living, and that functional spouse wants to be near their, their loved one who's, who's disabled, and they're driving. So, I wouldn't accept the assumption. I would search, do some fact-finding or have some experts give you some information as to whether it's really a fair assumption that there aren't going to be any parking needs.
We would stipulate to that effect, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
We would stipulate to that effect, that their, their residents would not drive.
So, I, I think the height, the height is, in terms of emergency visits, I know fire was mentioned, but the other question is how E M, how many EMT visits does a facility like this get in the course of a year? Sure, the statistics are available to the, to the applicants, so I would encourage the, the board to inquire as to that as well. But I think the, the best use for this property is the use that it's zoned for, and the variances should be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you.
I swear to tell the truth. My name is Ning, N.I.N.G., Lassim Yan, Y.A.N.G. I live on...
Could you use a microphone? I, I have a little difficulty hearing you.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Ning Yan, N.I.N.G., Y.A.N.G. I live on 46 Terhune Road, about three houses down from the Harrison Street on the other side. So, as I'm, I'm a member, I probably mentioned about this building is really out of character. To me, if you look at the rendering, that probably belongs to downtown Princeton, but not in the neighborhood, around Terhune and Harrison Street. And all the buildings are, have proper setbacks and much lower height. The, I want to remind about the traffic issue, you know, when we say the top staff number is 35 per shift, but there are also shift rotations, so there will probably 50%, 100% more traffic during that time. And the street clock happened to be a school dismissal time. I have a boy walking back every day from middle school to Terhune Road, crossing that dangerous right turn, I mean intersections. So, that's very concerning. And, and also, I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, the precedent we set here, because, you know, this is a massive zone adjustment request, variance change. What can stop other people using this example in the future to build out more bigger giant buildings around the neighborhood? Completely change the neighborhood's character. And one last one, you know, this is, I thought neighborhood residents should be notified by this kind of discussions, but unfortunately, I don't think we received anything. I was just wondering if there are any way we can receive future communication so that, you know, we're only three houses down from the, the intersection. So, we hope to make sure that our neighbors are being notified properly. So, that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Joanne Hegarty, and I promise to tell the truth. Hi, Jerry, how are you? I'm one of the neighbors who has had two other presentations from Sunrise. This is my third. Okay. Last name is H.E.G.A.R.T.Y., and I live at 386 North Harrison Street, and I'm also representing my neighbors at 380 North Harrison Street, who can't be here. So, we, I look at the lot every day, morning, noon, and night, and there's been changes over the years, but it's lovely to look at. My biggest concerns are the height of this particular building on top of a ridge, but not only the height, the setback, and it's coming closer and closer to Harrison Street. Original proposals did show a different configuration, and I know Sunrise has lots of flexibility there, so I'm not opposed entirely to an assisted living place in that space, that part of the variance. But in terms of myself and my neighbors, the height and the hugeness of something is something we would be very, very concerned about. And in addition, how close it comes to Harrison Street as well. I know there's discussion of trees and landscaping, which I agree with, but I think there's a way to make it a little more palatable to us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jean Rosenblum. I live at 140 Grover.
Mr. Rosenblum, you swear or affirm that your testimony will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
We live down the block. We didn't get noticed because we're a couple houses past the, the notice requirement, but we're here anyway. I hope in the future, I mean, I know the requirement isn't there. I used to serve on the zoning board, but really, the whole neighborhood should have been alerted as a practical matter. We have more people here because people talk to each other, and that's how we know. I would say, first of all, it's, the fact that we're not given the notice because we're over 200 feet away, or whatever it is right now, doesn't mean it's not going to impact us. I think it's going to impact the entire neighborhood, because it's an outsized development in a residential neighborhood. Yes, there is a shopping center and a medical center, but everything else around it is residential, and this is huge in that neighborhood. And that is going to impact it, us, all of us around it visually. Again, a number of people have pointed out, they're already on a ridge. It's already far above us, and so adding that extra height that they're asking for, it's going to tower over everything. So, it's a visual negative impact, and it will impact the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood because of that. It's also too broad, and they've minimized the buffers that are required by zoning by asking for every kind of variance they could possibly ask for. Too wide, no setbacks, no buffers for a residential neighborhood. The place is just too huge. Too many units. It was very carefully thought out by our town foremothers and far-fathers when they planned this. This was set up for, for senior living, and the intensity of development was increased for it, and that's what we should stick to. There's no reason that we've heard, I certainly haven't, to increase the density, to make all the zoning ordinance basically disappear for the benefit of Sunrise. It's not a benefit to the community. I also think that the, I'm not quite sure how this works, but they've designated the front somehow as being Harrison. I don't know why they've done that, because the front is obviously on Terhune. That's where the two entrances are for cars. That's where people are going to associate the front. I don't know if that gets them more wiggle room with their setbacks, or, or why, or maybe that's why they did the traffic study only on Harrison and not anywhere else, but it's not the front of the building.
Barry?
Yes.
There's only one setback on the, there's not a front, side, or rear, there's just one setback, except if you border a residential neighborhood. That's why the setback on Harrison is 50. So, that's, that addresses your question, I hope.
I'm sorry, the, the setback in Harrison is 50 because it's...
It borders a residential neighborhood. So, there's, the setback, I believe, is 20 feet, except if you border a residential neighborhood, it's 50 feet. So, that's why the 50s on Harrison. There really is no front, side, or rear, there's just a setback, a building setback.
Okay, but if the front is really Terhune, shouldn't it be 50 feet from Terhune?
No, because that's not a residential zone. The, the setback is 50 if you border a residential zone, so.
Well, we're residential.
But it's an OR zone. It's OR zone. It's, it's, their zoning is, they've applied for a variance for the setback on Harrison from the 50 feet. But there is no front yard designated, so there's no difference between a front yard. The medical office building is in an OR zone, which is not a residential zone, so that's why it's the regular 20-foot setback.
So, the residence is all around the other area, we don't count?
Well, you meet, they meet the 50-foot setback along the residential part of Terhune and Grover.
Okay. I, I also think it's, it's significant that the parking is half of what's required under our zoning ordinance, because I think that may lead to some additional, in addition to all the other traffic impacts that have been raised tonight, additional traffic impacts from people looking for a parking spot that isn't available in the parking lot. And people may wind up looking on side roads, and we may have additional traffic impacts from that. Again, they didn't study any of this, so we don't have an expert report about that. They just ignored it.
We do have an expert, a traffic expert that will testify.
Well, as, as I understand it, the traffic study was done on Harrison.
You haven't heard from him yet, and we will present that witness.
Okay, well, what was available to the public to this point did not address it.
We will address.
I think just basically, the, the overall development is just too huge. The intensity of use is too great, too many units, too wide, no buffers, too tall, and because of the, all of these variances that are being requested, it's going to have a significant negative impact on the neighborhood. And I think there will be additional noise impacts on, towards the residences, not, perhaps not on Harrison, because they're claiming that the building will interfere with those noise impacts, but the noise impacts towards everywhere else will probably be increased and possibly we may have some additional pollutants from the additional traffic and the people looking for parking spots. But mainly, I would urge you to stick with the zoning, which was, as I said, very carefully thought out to begin with, and it's in the master plan, adopted by ordinance, and was envisioned for more intense senior housing, but did not envision this at all. Thank you. Thank you.
I promise to tell the truth. I'm Valerie Chess, C-H-E-H, and I live at 31 Grover. I will not repeat what others have said, although I agree with them, but I do want to ask the committee to make sure you, we investigate this, the affordable housing issue. The state of New Jersey, under its permanent Medicaid program, does not pay for assisted living. It only pays for it under a waiver, as he has mentioned. A waiver can be evaluated by the state or by the Centers for Medicaid, Medicare, and it can go away. And so as a result, I don't know what that would do then to the affordable housing allotment that we're considering here tonight. So I want to encourage us to look into that before we approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I promise to tell the truth. I'm Carolyn Barnshaw, B-A-R-N-S-H-A-W, and I live at 422 Terhune Road. In 1995, Sunrise came to Princeton and proposed massive development very much like this, and it was extensively studied, reviewed, and it was rejected because of the massive scale of the development. Princeton talks about complete streets, of trying to make our streets safer. In 2013, because of traffic problems in residential Terhune Road, a survey found that there are 2,524 vehicles on Terhune Road every day. And of those 2,524 vehicles, 379 of those vehicles are traveling at speeds of 40 miles an hour and above. Terhune Road is a place where children cross to get to Littlebrook School and to get to the Charter School. And it is just, it's just so amazing that you would want to add to this development. It's very hard for children to walk or bike in this area, and it's going to be even harder. So I hope that you will not approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speak the truth, and my name is Dr. Surya Sharma.
I'm sorry, I just...
Surya, S-U-R-A-N-D-E-R. Last name is S-H-A-R-M-A. I'm on the member of municipality Complete Street Committee. I had a pleasure working with all these residents on Terhune Road. And if I say they had a parking and traffic issues, that'll be an understatement. They spent years and months in working with us, and they mentioned that the cars were speeding at 40 miles an hour. We have the data. I personally reviewed it in a safe act. And recently, our municipality passed a resolution just based on the issue that they brought it to the committee, and there was a technicality. The technicality was that they were within the legal rules of 85 percentile. Now, those 85 percentile should not, were never designed to be applied to the residential streets. And they usually apply only to the highways and freeways and so on and so forth. So the council passed that resolution. So at that point, we were not aware of all this new traffic patterns being coming up with this new building. So please, based on the facts that what they have gone through, and we feel it, and I understand the effect that affected their quality of life, this is going to add a lot more anxiety to their quality of life. These residents have been staying there, living there for decades. They had gone through floods, and they have gone through all these issues that we are very well aware of. Our municipality is very well aware of. I'm a member of the municipality Complete Street Committee, and I understand their concern. I share their concern. Having said that, I also have a major issue with their application, and I asked for it, and you can, I'll read it for you. And that says that the applicant will also seek any other variances, waivers, approvals, exceptions, or other relief that the board or its consultant may deem necessary without additional public notice. Well, that's a pretty big approval. If they ask for it without any public notice, that should not even be in there, because being a resident of Princeton and also being a member of the Complete Street Committee, I really request that please review this application based on the character that Princeton has, the issue that they are bringing up are true, and please, based on these things, this application has no merits. And that's my humble request, and I'd like you to reconsider that, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Schwartz. I lived at 63 Grover Avenue for about 25 years. It's about four, I'm sorry, and I swear to tell the truth of my opinion. I do welcome the comments of my neighbors and also of the engineers' report. I think they're very thoughtful. The rendering doesn't, the rendering to me looks like it's not very well buffered by the trees, and I don't really understand whether that rendering includes all the trees that are intended to be buffered, but I would recommend that that be addressed. It seems like a three-story building that close to the intersection rather does dominate. That's my major concern. I'm overall happy that somebody is considering doing something with this property, the western part of which is, you know, kind of a dump. But I want it to be done thoughtfully, and thanks for your attention.
My name is Julia Hasford, 430 Terhune Road. I've lived here since 1972.
Does that, you swear affirm your testimony will be truthful?
Only.
Thank you.
Sunrise casually talked about traffic, very casually, saying there's a lot of traffic on Terhune Road. I want to know why, if they have or have not conducted a study such as we had done several years ago. So we know pretty much how much traffic, but I think it's beholden on you to do that and let everyone...
We have done that.
But you haven't presented them.
We have, we have enough time.
The other thing is, I think it's very important to know how many cars, hundreds, if not thousands, are going into the medical group directly across the street. Oftentimes, that parking lot is so filled up that there's no place to go. You have to drive around and wait for one patient to come out, because there are so many facilities in that building, which used to be only one corporation. Now it's multiple corporations. Another thing, Sunrise casually talked about the driveways coming, how easy it will be for anyone to come in or out of the many, of your two driveways exiting onto Terhune Road. Well, come down Terhune Road, you're going to have two driveways, the opposite one of the medical group, which I was at a meeting before, when you were making this presentation, and there was, there was an architect in the audience, and he said, if you tell them that you want to park, you want to exit opposite the medical center, they'll reject you right away. Anyway, go down the next one. The large house there, that was Sam Pacacini's, he had a circular driveway. He sold his house to Barsky this or last year and got a variance, and they're going to build two houses behind his house. So you will have three families using that one driveway. So that's changed. Then you have the house on the corner, okay, that's a double driveway. Then you have Grover Avenue. So you have all these people coming out from their driveways and driving in. It's not going to be that easy for people to go into their driveways and exit. You also say that, another thing is, the time that your staff is coming and going, that's also the same time that school buses come at 3 o'clock or 2:30, going up and down Terhune Road. There is so, we, Terhune Road is an exceptional street, unfortunately. The speed limit for all residential streets is 25 miles an hour. Terhune Road, our section from going east, is 30 to 35 miles an hour. So everyone is legally able to drive 40 miles an hour, which they do, I know. I sit out front to do my reading, and I can see these cars. In fact, last year, and we also have no weight limit on Terhune Road. We have no weight limit, and we have a much higher speed limit than any other street. Last year, there were so many trucks going past my house, full of dirt and empty. I followed them out, and I took, they took me all the way out to Kendall Park. And this is how they do it, avoiding Nassau Street. So the traffic is horrendous, and the exiting, it's not just a casual thing that you can just come out of your driveway and get in. It's much worse. I mean, we all know, because we live there, and I've been there the longest time. Other than that, I want to say it's an outrageous facility to be put there.
Thank you.
I'm Crystal Schivell, spelled S-C-H-I-V-E-L-L. I live at 24 Monroe Lane, and I swear to tell the truth. I would ask for proof that there is a need for assisted living. We heard tonight in the presentation that they, the Sunrise, recognizes a significant need, and that is because we have 850 income-qualified houses and some other number of income-qualified caregivers, meaning the seniors' children, and Acorn is the only assisted living in our community. And somehow, I don't find that to be proof, except that we're rich enough, perhaps, to fill Sunrise's homes. So I agree with those who say this land could be used for better purposes, but if we are going to make all these variances, let's do it, knowing for sure that we need assisted living. We don't want a problem where seniors don't go to senior housing. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Katia Teneyk, T-E-N-E-Y-K, and I swear to tell the truth. I live on 252 Terhune Road, which is intersection of North Harrison and Terhune. So we are right diagonal from the proposed project. And I agree with all my neighbors who spoke before me, but I just want to add something very quickly, that this lot is zoned for senior market housing, and we should keep it as residential senior market housing. An assisted living facility is not a good fit for this community. Our community is residential, not commercial and not institutional. It should be residential. The seniors who will be living in an assisted living facility will not benefit from the location. They will not be walking to the shopping center. They will not be taking buses. They will already have help in their facility. So it's not beneficial to have an assisted living facility on this lot. We should have a nice senior housing project so seniors can walk to the shopping center, go to the doctor's office, take the bus, and that's, we should just keep it as a senior market zone, not the assisted living facility. It's not a good fit, and I think the applicant should look for a different lot. Thank you.
Adam Beerman, I swear to tell the truth, whole truth, so help me God. I agree with what everyone, the neighbors have said here. I think we feel there's been a bait and switch. We're not going to go away, I don't think. And if my institutional memory serves right, there's been four or five attempts in the last 50 years, I talked to some of the old timers, and none of these projects have worked out, because it's not the right fit. Thank you.
I'm Hank Kinson, H-A-N-K-I-N-S-O-N, and I swear to tell the truth. I live at 120 Grover Avenue, and I'm concerned with the stormwater runoff, because I live at the bottom of the hill next to Grover Park, and the stream at the bottom of the hill regularly floods and floods my house. So I would hope that, I'm not convinced yet that the mitigation of the stormwater can take place on-site. I need to be convinced of that before I think you should allow the zoning. Thank you.
I assume we've now heard all of the people that wish to speak. Okay. So what is your next step?
To adjourn to a date certain, without further notice, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
To adjourn to a date certain at another hearing. I'm advised we have no more time this evening.
Correct.
So we would like this carried on the record so that we need not renotice.
Okay, so we'll carry you to the next meeting, is that you have in mind?
Next, unless the board is amenable to a special, special hearing.
Well, we have to. You think we'll be notified with that?
When is the next hearing?
It's May...
May 23rd.
Perfect.
May 23rd.
May 23rd at 7:30?
All right.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Thank you.
Let's take a five-minute break.
That's a great idea.
The board is going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and hear the two remaining cases for this evening.
Requested the existing drive-on Franklin and the new parking area on Ewing should be reduced. The throat of the Ewing Street-Franklin Avenue should also be looked at, at reducing some of that. The project will require nine replacement trees. We ask the applicant work with the land use engineer regarding the replanning of those trees, hopefully within the public right-of-way on Ewing Street. And the existing roof drainage outlets through the curb, drain through the curb onto Franklin, and the existing drain should be located and connected to the existing inlet at the intersection of Ewing and Franklin. And the existing utilities are currently served by a single utility for each utility. Applicant should address how utility connections for the new proposed units will be addressed. And the applicant's proposing to remove the large asphalt paving area on Ewing Street. This will require the removal of the existing concrete sidewalk, and we would ask that the replacement sidewalk be installed to the east of the existing utility poles, which would create a large enough planting area between the sidewalk and curb for street trees. As indicated earlier, nine replacement trees are required, and we ask that the applicant work with the land use engineer regarding the replanning of those trees. The applicant's requested a C1 and C2 consideration for the bulk variances, and that's a short synopsis of the, my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Do we have any questions? So. Yeah, Richard Schatzman, attorney for the applicant. As per usual, either Mr. Sol or Mr. Bridger gave, gives a thorough synopsis, and due to the lateness of the hour, I'll keep my mouth shut, only other than say that the planner's here, but he'll give other reasons for the special reasons, the positive criteria, the lack of the negative criteria, and the testimony regarding the D.C. burden of proof that is required by the New Jersey Supreme Court. But first, we'd like to give a brief overview by our engineer, Mr. Ghazali, so if you swear a name. Oh, by the way, by the way, I filed an affidavit, a publication...
Yes, you did. You did. You did, and I will advise the board the noticing is in order. I should have said that initially, and the board certainly has jurisdiction to hear the application tonight.
All right, Mr. Ghazali, be sworn in by Ms. Casey, please.
Sir, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
And brief. You want to tell us very quickly what your profession is and what your licensing is?
Yes. I'm a licensed professional engineer, bachelor of science from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've been licensed since 1990. I appeared before this board within the last year on a major subdivision on Prospect, and my license is still in good standing.
There's no problem with accepting this qualification. You want to give, given the hour, you want to give a quick overview, although Mr. Derek Bridger did a very sort of thorough job, but just fill in the, fill in the spaces we have, so we have a full record.
Okay. Properties, Lot 1 in Block 7305, contains 12,900... Properties Lot 1 in Block 7305, contains 12,969 square feet. It's at the northeast corner of Ewing Street and Franklin Avenue. It's in a split zone, because it straddles the old municipal boundary lines. It's in the R3 zone in the borough and R8 in the township, although only about 1,600 square feet is in the former borough, and none of the structures are located in the borough. Currently, it's an apartment and a medical office, has a large parking lot situated off of Ewing, and it has a residential-type driveway off of Franklin. The proposal is to eliminate a portion of the larger driveway on Ewing, I'm sorry, and construct a patio. A garage addition would be added on the Ewing side of the property, as well as a small bump-out, about 74 square feet, also on the Ewing portion of the property. The net effect of the reconfiguration of the driveway to accommodate the new garage and the removal of the existing asphalt would result in about 900 square feet of reduction of impervious coverage. As Derek mentioned, that still leaves us over and in a variant situation, but it is a better situation. We do have some variances for setbacks and for parking. There is a setback on Franklin Avenue of 21.53 to the existing structure. That's an existing variance, and that would remain. There is a setback variance for parking for the existing residential-style driveway, also on Franklin Avenue, again, in existing condition, and we would ask that that would remain. As far as utility connections, assuming an approval, the applicant would contact the respective utilities for gas, water, and electric metering for the second residential That's basically it, except we could go through the comments from...
Yeah, the staff comments, one, two, three, four, and five. Should we get approval, you know, we would replace the trees and work with the landscape architect. The existing roof drain outlets from the car curb on the Franklin Avenue, the drain should be relocated, we would agree to. Existing utilities in the house are currently served by a single connection for each utility, so we'll have to, if we get approval, have two utility connections for each of the units. And the sidewalk replacement, we've read too. Am I right?
Yes. The only thing that we would have an issue with would be in Item 1, which is the reduction of the driveway width, the throat dimension from the streets. We'd like to keep that as-is. They're not overly sized.
What is it at the present time?
The...
15 feet wide?
The existing on Franklin is, hang on one second here, is about 20 feet.
20.
21 feet. And, of course, the one on Ewing, we are reducing quite a bit, because we're removing part of that medical parking lot. So other than that, we're fine with all the staff recommendations.
Is that your testimony, Mr. Gazali?
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions from the board on that? I will always have my concern about drainage and exterior lighting. Oh, no. So drainage not to run over your property. That goes without saying at all. We're not proposing any lighting, are we?
No, it'll have typical residential lighting.
Sorry?
It'll have typical residential lighting.
Well, that's what I'm afraid of. The exterior lighting should be such that the light bulb cannot be seen from off the property, and no lights spillage over the property line. Yeah, any exterior lighting would be shielded and pointed down, so there's no spillage over from our property to the neighbors'. I mean, that goes without saying.
And as far as drainage, we are reducing the impervious, and we do agree to the recommendation of the staff to pipe the roof leader, which currently dumps out onto the road and creates an icing condition. We'll take that to a storm drain at the intersection.
All right.
If you could, tell me again what your special reason for the C1 is?
We're going to have a planner, Mr. Floyd, okay? He's just getting given an overview, filling the spots that Mr. Bridger, you know, glossed over. So we'll have the planner next, if it's all right with the board, and he'll give the special reason, the lack of the negative criteria, and the Medici burden of proof, okay, Mr. Floyd? All right? Okay. Okay, Mr. Gagel, please. Want to swear, Mr. Floyd?
Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Paul Grygel, last name spelled G-R-Y-G-I-E-L. Licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have been since 1999. I've been currently, previously, except as an expert witness by this board and the Princeton Planning Board, as well as over 140 other boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
I think your qualifications will do.
Thank you.
Particularly for this time of night.
Thank you.
All right, you want to give us the purpose and scope of your work, and what you did, and what your conclusions are, based upon facts?
Yes.
The opinion is not what we call a net opinion.
Yes, given the hour, I'll skip over some of my extensive outline. However, the purpose was just to review the variance request, in particular, the use variance, as well as the related bulk variances from a planning perspective. I reviewed the municipality's master plan and zoning, as well as visited the site on multiple occasions, as well as the surrounding area, reviewed the application materials, and pretty much everything related to this application. Just with regard to the proposal, one key factor in my view is the property's context. In a mixed-use area, it's located in a residential zone in both the former borough and township, one that permits two-family, one that does not. But the area surrounding the property includes both multifamily to the south, there's a two-family home directly to the north at 243 Ewing Street, as well as to the southwest, and a number of single-family residences to the further north and west. But also, to the east, you have the influence of properties along Harrison, which are mixed offices and residential properties. Also, on the west side of Ewing Street, there's the property's front on Linden Lane, so you have the rear of those properties. So again, this is not your typical single-family residential setting. With regard to the variances being sought, Mr. Bridger outlined them in his memo and in testimony, so I won't rehash all of them. If I may, I can jump right to the use variance proofs that are required. As was mentioned, one of the ways to grant the use variance is talk about zoning into in utility. That's not what we're suggesting. Instead, in my opinion, this property is particularly well-suited to permit the conversion of an existing mixed-use building into a two-family dwelling. First, the property, well, stepping back for a second, the Price-Vie Hemmige land use case talks about you need to deal with site-specific characteristics. This was a case out of Union City from a few years ago, and we don't need to demonstrate that there's no other locations for the proposed use, but that there's something about the property and its context that make it particularly suitable. In this case, you have an existing one-story building, there are minimal physical changes proposed to it. Really, the building is very uniquely designed, as well as has two discrete sections for the office and apartment. We're just changing the use of one of them. So converting that portion of the building would not radically change the structure. Also, the applicant's reducing the amount of pavement on the property significantly, and reducing the width of the curb on Ewing Street. In terms of the area, as I mentioned, there's a mix of uses nearby, so I think that plays into the suitability of the property as well. And lastly, the lot is split between two zones on the former boundary of the municipalities. So this is a unique setting, that from the positive criteria, the suitability of the property, I think there are a number of factors that the board can consider in potentially granting a use variance. It would also promote Purpose A of the municipal land use law, providing for the health, safety, and welfare by adding an additional housing option in an appropriate location. I would like to add to that in the negative criteria discussion. First, in my opinion, there'd be no substantial detriment to the public good, for a number of the reasons I cited, given the property's location, the existing design. It would not detract from the character of the surrounding area to convert the use of the dwelling. In fact, by changing the office space to residential would lessen potential impacts. If the building reused this office, you'd still have the pavement, you'd still have more trips generated for visits to the doctor's office in the future. Instead, we're proposing to just remove that parking lot that makes it look less residential, fix up the building, make it more attractive, improve its condition. The alternative that would likely happen, again, this is based on looking at the surrounding area, and I'm sure the board's familiar, is that most likely you'd have a tear-down of this dwelling and replacement with a larger one. There's examples nearby, including directly across the street, one lot to the north of Franklin Avenue, where there's a rather large new dwelling next to the existing older dwellings. So I think for those reasons, there'd be no substantial detriment to the public good with regard to character of the area. To take it a step further, with the other aspect of the negative criteria, the impact on the zone plan and zoning ordinance, I think this proposal would be consistent with various recommendations from the municipality's master plan. With regard to its use, the area of the municipality is designated for high-density residential, actually, on the land use map. So this category does include one-family, two-family homes, townhouses, and multifamily, so it's not, again, designated as a typical single-family area. With regard to the 2017 master plan reexamination, it talks about a number of factors I think are relevant, including proper balance of new residential, as well as affordable housing, basically taking into account the character of areas within the municipality, but also protecting the natural environment, maintaining character of neighborhoods, things that I think would all be furthered by this proposal. I could go into more detail on this, but basically, to summarize some other points in the master plan, there was a major concern mentioned in multiple locations in that document about the tear-down of existing residential structures and replacement of small or modest-sized structures with larger ones. So again, I think from this proposal, we're proposing to not replace the existing dwelling, to not go up taller, to not go closer to the street, to not have a much larger, out-of-character home. So I think that, in fact, if you look at the figures of the Flory ratio, you could actually theoretically have a 3,800-square-foot home or larger on this property. Again, just based on Flory ratio. I didn't design it, but just looking at the sheer numbers. So what's being proposed is to maintain an existing smaller building with a new use that, again, really is a modest change from what exists today. So I think for those reasons, the zoning ordinance being violated strictly in this case can be justified with regard to these various aspects of the master plan. And also, I would note this split zoning is a factor to consider, that the portion of the property in the former borough actually would permit two-family. The zoning was never changed when the municipality consolidated to address this condition. So I think this deals with the Medici reconciliation for what specific characteristics the site has that make a use variance warranted. So I think in whole, on the use variance case, it can be granted to allow the two-family home to replace the existing mixed-use dwelling. Lastly, with regard to the C variances, these relate to very specific conditions. The front yard is only due to the setback being measured to the roof. The garage that's being proposed is still further setback than the closest point of existing house. The house itself would not be brought any closer to the street. The parking setbacks would not be changing. In fact, the major change is reducing the impervious coverage significantly over existing conditions, which would have beneficial impacts on drainage. Building coverage would slightly increase by modernizing the building, but again, it's related to trying to enhance the character of the structure, and it would only, it's actually a borough requirement, and there's no improvements in the borough, no building, excuse me, within the borough. So strictly speaking, we're really not changing anything with regard to the coverage requirement for the borough. So for all these reasons, I think the variances can be granted in the C2 criteria, that the benefits of reusing this building, or the two-family dwelling, without any detriments, and there'd actually be some hardship with regard to the building coverage, for the reason I mentioned, as well as the, there's a lot depth variance, which is not being changed, so those would be hardship variances. So in summary, I think the positive and negative criteria would be met for all the requested variances.
Any questions to Mr.... Any questions to Mr. Grygel? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next witness would be the architect, will give why, the floor plans, the elevations, and in her opinion, why you would have to knock this building down instead of trying to convert it within the same shell. Okay? Ronnie, you want to swear?
Ma'am, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
You want to give us what your profession is?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, have been since 1990, have run my small office in Princeton also since 1990. I've appeared in front of this board numerous times. Last time was the Unitarian Church for a variance on FAR.
Okay, and you obviously prepared the floor plans and the elevations, and have examined the house that's there now, house, office that is there now, correct?
Correct. You're looking at a house that was built in 1962. It's wood frame, single-story, so it's very much a basic 1962 house. We are pretty much leaving the one-apartment side alone, other than renovating the bathrooms and sprucing things up a bit, a new kitchen. The other side, the current dermatology office is going to be changed into a new residence. We added a small, modest garage, a porch, new windows, that type of renovation. We are not over the FAR. I think what we added is very modest. It's only about 200 square feet. We have like 420 square feet to go on FAR. I think if it was not a two-family dwelling, like the planner, I would agree, somebody would tear this down.
Why?
Because you would want to maximize your FAR, you would want to lower your coverage, you would put in a basement, which this house does not have, it's slab-on-grade. So you'd put the basement in to maximize the area of the house, but basement doesn't count in FAR. So you would build a two-story house to lose some of the lot coverage issues. So it would become what people like to call the McMansion. I think what we're trying to do, as you can see, we're trying to blend in with what was done in '62 and keep it what it's been in the neighborhood and make it work for what it is. I'll also point out that the house was always built as a two-use place. There's a block wall down the middle of the house separating the two uses, and not just a block wall partway up, a block wall that continues all the way up to the roof. So they did it right, and it was always two uses like that, and we're taking advantage of that same wall. So I think it's nice not to tear something down also. And it's more green. If we keep it, two families use it, we're not lead, but we're doing a big thing of not putting a home into a landfill, which is what most likely would happen.
Okay, you want to just briefly describe the floor plans and the elevations, please?
Sure. The floor plan here, the sort of gold-tan area is what the doctor's office is currently. We're going to have three bedrooms, big open family living room, small garage, little laundry room. The gray area is the three-bedroom, two-bath current apartment. It has an open carport, which we're keeping. There's a small courtyard in the middle that exists now, we're keeping that. The other courtyard facing Franklin's, as it is, we're keeping that. Adding a patio to Unit 1, which is the dermatology office, just so that they'll have some outdoor space as well. The elevations, you can see, we've gabled very similar, same roof pitches, using the same materials, keeping it very much in context with 1962, and blending it in was the plan.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from Miss Gregganser, from anybody here?
I have a question. Are you putting in two working fireplaces?
It currently has one working fireplace in the existing apartment, and we're adding another, yes, to Unit 1. It would be most likely a gas fireplace that time.
So is the current owner going to keep ownership of this?
Pardon?
Will the current owner keep ownership?
Yes. He's retired, and he, you know, wants to keep it for, you know, supplemental income.
I guess if you unprove it, if he does want to sell it, makes it harder for somebody to knock it down and build something bigger, because they're going to have to pay more money for it too. I mean, how do we know it's not going to get knocked down three years from now?
Well, you can't predict the future, but I mean, that's why we're here. I mean, if it were knocked down, Mr. Floyd, we wouldn't be here and spend money, you know, but I mean, this is what he wants to do with his property. I mean, if he can get... But I mean, this is what he wants to do with his property, I mean, if he can get approval from this board. He's retired, that's where he used to have his dermatology practice, and so he, you know, wants to make some use of a building that has been in his family since, oh, 40, 50 years maybe. But that's all I can tell you as an answer to your question. I can't tell you anything else.
Thank you.
To be honest.
One thing I would add, it is, as the planner testified too, is sort of mixed neighborhood. So across the street are brick apartments, two-story brick apartments. So what's selling in that area at 1.2, 1.3 on a single-family house, I don't know that the brick apartments across the street would be a major plus for somebody spending that kind of money for a tear down, but that's what they probably do anyhow.
Sell it.
Sell it.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this case? Okay. I was going to have another witness, but due to the lateness of the hour, the other witness will be, would be his broker who tried to sell his property and is unable to do so because of the smallness of the professional office, because it was built so long ago. But I think we've given you enough information for you to come to a decision one way or the other on the special reasons, lacking the negative criteria in the DC. So I'm going to just go back to this, due to the lateness of the hour.
Okay.
All right?
Yes. So, what is your pleasure? Seems to me a fairly straightforward modification.
Yeah, I can't help but think about the house in the neighborhood that we, the board denied, that the two families, wasn't that?
I can't hear you. I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm just thinking back to a recent case that came before the board in the same neighborhood in which it was denied being converted. It's a little different because it wasn't bordering the boundary of where it becomes a two-family.
And it's previously been a three?
Right. It went from three to two, but then it was denied.
Yeah, because one was old, it was permitted.
Yeah.
Unless somebody else lived there.
Right.
Well, can I make a comment? Each case rests on its own fact. Ms. Chen, and also Judge, Judge Holmes in a case called Price v. Himgi, said that being bordering on a zone can be considered by the board as a special reason, can be considered, not necessarily must be considered, but bordering on a zone where the use is permitted can be a special reason by the board. And that's a Supreme Court case.
I do appreciate that it's not a tear down.
So it's up to you whether you want to say that is or not. Our prorator certainly said it was, but it's up to you ultimately to make the decision.
Ms. Chen, the other thing is, I think the application you were thinking was, it was an illegal conversion. I mean, this applicant is coming to you and asking permission to do the work. The other application was all done illegally many years prior, so.
Okay. Any comments, questions? If not, do we have a motion to do something?
I think this is thoughtfully done. I would move to approve with our standard conditions.
Sorry?
I would have moved to approve with, I guess, the standard conditions.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve as presented?
I would second that.
As a second to the motion, could you call the roll for a sent to the?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, especially for this time. I'll get out of here.
Good. We have our last case of the evening then, which is 132 Elm Road, and carries the case I will ask Mr. Bridger to do his usual clarification of the memorandum on the case.
And I'll note the board, the notice thing is in order, the board has jurisdiction.
We have, okay.
Thank you, sir. DJ Noiz of Cummins Associates, the applicant for 132 Elm Associates LLC.
Could you go out of the room if you want to talk?
Which is the owner of the property.
Would you go out of the room if you wish to talk? We're trying to do some work here.
And they are seeking a C2 variance pursuant to Section 17820 of the former Princeton Borough Land Use Ordinance to permit the reconstruction-expansion of an existing wrought-iron and masonry fence wall that runs along the front portion of the property on Elm, or Elm Road. Some of the wall exceeds the maximum height restriction of six foot, which is in Section 178377, properties located in the R1 Zone, subject to the use in bulk regulations in 178227, 231, subject lot complies with all the applicable bulk regulations. It's noncompliant with regard to the front yard setback. The prevailing yard setback is 46 feet, and the existing masonry shed is three feet. The tennis court is 16, and the generator is 12. We had a variance granted for the generator in April 2017. So this is kind of a reconstruction. The center portion of the fence along this area here in front of the house was open before, and these folks have changed the orientation of the drive area to permit two entrances. And then this will be fenced in with wrought-iron fencing. It's worth noting that as you come from the top of Elm Road here, the grade goes down, and that's part of the reason for the fence. The fence is, complies with the six foot in most of the area, but as the grade drops, the fence becomes higher than the six foot and is at eight foot in some sections. There used to be a code in the borough that if you had a nonconforming structure, it was, could be, needed to be repaired or was destroyed, you could rebuild it to the same height, but that was eliminated several years ago. So this is kind of a reconstruction of what was there. They're still keeping the front of the house open, it's not walled off with concrete, it'll be a wrought-iron fence. So I'll just go over, there's several areas. The two-entry piers are 6.25 feet and 6.42 feet, the existing wrought-iron fence in the front of the house. It starts at six feet but rises to 8.25 feet with the grade drop, and the existing reconfiguration of the wrought-iron fence requires a placement of two piers in the middle sections. The piers were eight, the previous piers were 8.33 feet and 8.42 feet, and the new piers are 8.17 and 8.75, and that's really the reason of the variance. Anything over six feet requires a variance, and they're seeking a C2 consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
My name is Scott Schley, S-C-H-L-E-Y. I'm general counsel for the petitioner, and first of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us to be heard at this late hour. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to DJ Noiz from Cummins Associates, who will describe everything in more detail.
Thank you.
Wait, Mr. Noiz, we need to swear you in, I'm sorry. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I'd like to, if it's helpful, pass out a handout for those of you who can't see the board over here.
Take a microphone with you.
And Mr. Schley, shall we make this exhibit, there's several?
This is the only exhibit, right?
All right, so Exhibit A1 and A2?
Okay.
Okay, again, my name is DJ Noiz. I work with Cummins Associates Landscape Architects. I'm going to go through this quickly because I think it's fairly straightforward, what we're going to pass out. I think most of you can see it up here. The top view is, this is the plan view along Elm Road. The elevation below is the existing condition of the property when we started the project. I'm going to go left to right. Left is the south end on Elm Road. When we started the project, there was an existing nonconforming tennis court in this area of the property, and the wall along Elm Road had a four-foot chain-link fence on top of that wall in this area. So the big area in red that you see is a chain-link fence on top of that wall that was removed. The two red piers in the center of the driveway, those were the existing piers that we have since removed. The new driveway is located further south on the property, and there's an existing driveway that will remain on the north side of the property. So in creating the new curb cut on the south side of the property, we made a cut, we made a cut in the wall, we removed the tennis court fencing, and we're looking to keep the same pier relationship to the top of that wall for those two piers. So that's the only proposed change there. Those piers do exceed the six-foot height requirement, so technically, we're asking for a variance to maintain the same existing wall height to pier relationship along the whole facade there.
Why don't you step it to piers?
Pardon?
Why don't you come along and then drop down and drop down as you need?
So that top of wall is level across here, so all we've done is basically...
The ground is not. That's why you're having a trouble, not?
On this, on this area of the property, it's fairly level here. It doesn't really start to drop until you get about midway down where the gates were. So all, all the wall, all the wall along this side is existing. We have not changed, made any changes to the wall height. All we've done is made a new drive entrance into the property on that end. So we're just looking to maintain the same relationship of what the original piers and original fencing was to the top of the walls. The two piers that were removed in the center of the driveway, we simply looked to re-space them out a little bit more so we had a little better rhythm with the fencing along Elm Road. So we widened them, we looked at the relationship to the house, and we actually matched the offset with the coins, the coin detail on the corner of the house, is sort of how we set that width on those piers. So there's this low, there's this low-wall section in the middle of the property that goes from about three inches to about a knee-high wall, and that's the, that's the section that has the fencing on top of it. We're simply looking to replace that fencing at the same height that existed before, so it has the same relationship to the, to the pier caps that it ties into, because we haven't made any changes to the wall as far as height on the, on the solid portions of the wall of the property there. What you see in yellow, that's just adding the new fencing in where the old driveway was, and the green below it is the new section of low-knee wall that we would, that we're proposing to put in. It's a historic property. It was designed by a noted architect, Princeton grad Marion Sims Wyeth. His noted works were Mar-a-Lago, and he did Doris Duke's estate in Honolulu, Shangri-La. So we're really looking to preserve what was there as far as the relationship of the fence height, the wall, which we've not exceeded. We're really not changing any of the walls here, but just looking to maintain the cap, you know, the pier cap relationship and the fencing. Any questions? I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer.
And none of the wrought-iron fencing is there at the present time, is that?
The plan, the plan was to remove it and replace it in kind. There was an accident this summer, happened to be on sight that day, a car coming down Hodge.
Decided to go through?
Decided to go through the front of the fence, so it knocked the whole right side of the fence off, and that spurred the removal of the rest of the fence, and then we had to rebuild the low wall because it was all old clay tile block that just shattered. So we had to basically redo that whole low wall along the front of the property. I have photos, if that's helpful to see, but that's really why the fence came down when it did. Otherwise, we would have just, you know, looked to replace the old fencing with the new at the same, at the same height it was.
Essentially, the fence is transparent.
Fence is transparent. It's a black metal wrought iron.
Behind it, or it's open?
Excuse me? There will be some plantings behind it, but it's open, you can see the house. It's actually a beautiful home that they're trying to preserve the street appeal for.
Yeah, so it's a wrought-iron fence. There's a clipped hornbeam hedge that will be, you know, in the range of six to seven feet. The goal is to still, when you come down Hodge Road, still preserve the look of the house, but when you're in the courtyard for the residents and their kids, you know, you're not exposed to the headlights and the traffic, and they have some sense of privacy.
Yeah. I can't read the numbers. How wide is the wrought-iron fence portion? How, what's the width?
What's the width?
Well, just, I was just, the total, is that like a 200 feet, 150?
Oh, the total span.
It's about eight feet?
Yeah. Pier, pier to pier is about 100, it's about 110 feet, the span of fencing there.
Thank you.
And that, that hasn't changed, other than the opening in the center of the driveway. We're not changing where the fence started and ended, because where, where it goes back to the taller, solid wall is, that's all existing. All we've done is restuck of that wall, and we'll put a, we'll put a new cap on it as well.
How far from completion are you for the whole project?
The interior's done, the owners are in the house, and we've got a meeting with the landscape contractors, but they've got the site turned over to them now without all the subcontractors being inside of the house, so they'll, you know, they're going to be working over the next few months, but with a push on getting that front finalized and, you know, looking a little more presentable along Elm Road, because I know the neighbors have endured it for quite a while now.
Derek, you made the comment that previously, I mean, seven years ago, eight years ago, this could have just been replaced.
Actually, it was, I think, three years ago.
Three years ago?
Yeah.
Do you know why it was changed?
It was swept up into that FAR.
It just disappeared without anyone knowing about it?
It was, it was included when they were doing the FAR tightening, they were trying to look at reducing FAR, and they, I guess the thought was, existing buildings that exceeded FAR shouldn't be rebuilt. But unfortunately, for simple things like a garage that might get torn down or by a tree, by accident, they have to come back to the board, just like, you know, a fence like this that they were going to rebuild, so.
Okay, do we have any questions? Sorry? There doesn't appear to be. Where are the audience? Yeah. You have a motion to approve, is that what you've just made? Okay, is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Do we need to discuss the motion, or are we ready to vote? Judging by the silence, everyone's asleep, so why don't you call the roll and wait?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you all very much again for allowing us to do it this evening.
Okay, we're adjourned. Don't forget to take some of these papers home with you. We'll need them next time. I don't know which are mine, and I think these are yours, yeah. I don't know which are mine, and I think these are yours, yeah.